Did that, or she called me to let me know she's running probably about 10 minutes late. She had to take her son to school.
Okay, got it. Then we can go ahead and start, I think, and she'll jump in when she gets here. All right, so I'm gonna call us to order. It's nine oh two AM. Welcome, everybody. This is our first ever, that I've been to anyway, board retreat. And I'm so excited that we have a chance to get together. We're gonna do a little bit of procedural stuff at the beginning like we always do, and then I'll talk a little bit more about what the game plan is for today. So we'll begin with our roll call as always. Trustee Andrews.
Yeah.
Trustee Kapal.
Here.
Trustee Cervantes.
Here.
And trustee Wilkerson is on her way, so she will join us when she can. I would like to propose a quick swap on an agenda item. So in section eight, our second roundtable discussion, I'd like to swap items B and C. We have, when we originally made the agenda, we weren't sold on an evaluation format, but we actually did get one, and I think it's pretty useful. So I'd like to talk about the evaluation first and then do some goal setting afterwards. I think that will make more sense. So it would be Brown Act refresher, annual evaluation format, goal setting and commitments. Is there any objection to that? Okay, great, thanks. So that being the case, I'd like to ask for motion to adopt the agenda with that change.
I'm going to adopt the agenda.
Oh, okay. Rush, I heard you first. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, perfect. So motion's been made and seconded. Perfect. Oh, here's Camila. We'll give her just a second to come on and then we'll vote.
Morning.
Good morning.
Sorry about that.
No, not at all. We were just going through some of the procedural stuff at the beginning. The only issue that I flagged is I'm swapping items B and C in section eight. So we'll, we'll talk about the evaluation format first, and then we'll do some goal setting. We had a motion and a second, so we're just about to vote on adopting the agenda with that change. So let's go ahead and do that. Trustee Andrews. Trustee Kapal.
Hi.
Trustee Cervantes.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson. And I vote for me. Okay, perfect. Guys, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? I haven't received any, but have any come in?
No, they have not.
Okay. All right, so that brings us into our first roundtable. So before we dive in, I want to talk a little bit about sort of what the, what the goal is today, what the game plan is, kind of why we're doing this, and what, what we're hoping to accomplish. So I think it's probably fair to say that this is a weird job in normal times. Like even without a pandemic, even without doing everything virtually, being a library trustee is kind of an unusual job, and it's unusual for a lot of reasons. Like we have very specific roles. We work as a group, but because of some very, you know, laudable restrictions in the Brown Act, we can't actually like get together and work outside of board meetings. So there are a lot of constraints that keep us from interacting the way that you would with any normal group of people in any normal organization you work with, whether it's a professional one or a, you know, a community group or anything else. Normally, folks just get together and chat about things. You get to know people. It's sort of a, sort of an organic process. Well, for lots of structural reasons, we can't exactly do that. Added to which, we have, of course, all the restrictions of a pandemic. And so we're doing everything virtually, which makes it just that much weirder and that much more distanced and that much more kind of funky and artificial. So we're not, you know, hanging out in the library. We're not chatting before and after. We're not, I'm not asking Terry if he's going back to Antarctica. Like, I mean, I would like to know if you're going back to Antarctica, but that, you know, that, no, okay. So one of the things that I hope to accomplish today is to give us a chance to just get to know each other a little bit, get to know how we operate, how we function, what matters to us, talk a little bit about kind of who we are as, as actual human people. Because it turns out that knowing that and understanding what we all bring to the table is gonna make us so much more effective as a board working together. So that's goal number one, is just a little bit of a chance outside of the regular structure of meetings to, to get to know each other a little bit better as actual folks. The second goal, and you'll see, of course, in the PowerPoints that we sent out yesterday, as well as with our, our presenters today, is to lay in sort of a common vocabulary for some of the work that's gonna be coming at us this year. So obviously with the success of Measure Z, we have a very full plate of activities for the coming year. We're gonna have a lot of decisions to make. And I think it's important that we all share a common vocabulary, regardless of our previous experience or lack thereof with public works projects and public financing. So we've asked a couple of people to come in today and, and give us sort of the 10,000-foot view, just so we've got some common language and some common understanding of process. We are, as you'll see in the agenda, obviously, we're not making any decisions today. We're not doing anything, you know, substantive in terms of project management or anything like that. We're just getting everybody on the same page. So my hope is that this will be the start of a conversation. It will certainly not be the only conversation, but I also hope that it, you know, as we kick off all of our committee work, it allows us to ask questions and, you know, sort of think through some of our decisions and inflection points from just a little bit more informed position. And then the last, the last goal is to, again, open up a conversation about governance. So I think it's fair to say that some of the things we've seen happen this week on the national stage have been shocking and surprising, and this is sort of things that I personally never thought that I would see in the United States. And it reminds me of something that our former colleague Betsy Khan used to say, which is, she would say, "This is our little corner of democracy." And I really like that idea. I like the idea that this is our little area of democracy. It's, it's one public institution, one community institution that we can make better. And so when we think about what our role is as trustees, yes, it's oversight. Yes, it's policy. Yes, it's making sure the budget functions. But it's also making sure that we live up to the highest ideals of not just what public libraries stand for, but what democratic institutions stand for. And this board has done a lot of work in the previous years, certainly the previous two years, to getting to a place of functionality, of transparency. And I know that's a priority for all of us. What I'd like to start today is a conversation about what happens next. Right? So thinking about all of that work as basically the floor and not the ceiling. Where do we want to go from here? What do we want this board to look like? What do we want the role of each of us as individual trustees, as all of us as a collective body? What are we interested in doing? How do we actually make that happen? And what are some, you know, some sort of goals and commitments that we'd like to align ourselves to for the coming year? So again, I don't think that we will probably conclude that conversation today. I think it's one that should continue happening over the course of the year, but it's one that I'd like to start. And I think all of us have different strengths, different perspectives, and I'm, I'm interested in opening that up so that we can, we can start to explore what that next phase might look like. So that's sort of the, that's sort of the game plan for today. And like I said, what we're gonna start with is a little bit of a chance to kind of get to know each other better. And again, super weird to do this like in a public meeting that's live streaming. Like, let's just acknowledge that. That's super strange, but here we are. So what we're doing, so what are you gonna do? One of the reasons that we asked you all to, to read this book on the languages of appreciation in the workplace and take the inventory is because it follows on to some of the work that the library staff have been doing in their professional development. So Nikki, I wonder if you could join us for a minute and talk a little bit about what the staff have done before we dive into some of our questions and answers.
Sure, absolutely. Good morning, trustees. Happy New Year. So good to see all of you and hope your families and all of you are staying safe and healthy. I'd also like to thank Katie and Natalia for all of their hard work in organizing this retreat and the amazing handbook that Natalia put together. So I'm really glad that we were able to do this in spite of not being able to do it in person. So to provide some context on how we integrated the five languages of workplace appreciation to our staff professional development. So as you know, we came back to working in the building in May, and there was a call in June for us to do some type of professional development or training with staff around breaking down barriers in terms of like miscommunication between departments, as well as healing from some of the issues and trauma that occurred in the past, which many of you are very familiar with. So with me laying our Youth and Family Services Department head, Chloe, my Marketing and Community Engagement Manager, and Nicole, my Administrative Services Manager, we put together a professional development day for July 2nd, which we themed Shift, which stands for Sustainable Healing and Integration for Forward-Moving Transformation. We will be quizzing you on that later. Yeah, I had to ask Chloe again, like, what did it stand for? So that on July 2nd, in the afternoon, we split the staff into six teams focused on the values that we identified in the strategic plan, which were empathy, equity, and innovation. The teams were then tasked with coming up with a program, service, or initiative around their value and that was assigned to their group, and half of them had to focus on something that was externally focused and in relation to their value, and half were focused on an internal program, service, or initiative. So the team that was assigned empathy with an internal focus chose this book to read as a staff and come up with some way to develop as a group around that. So that activity then led to our second professional development day in October, which was, I believe, October the 12th, which centered around the book and activities to help us better understand each other. So we talked first, first thing that morning, we split into groups with people that shared our similar language to talk through what that means, especially as it related to our work in the library. After that, we then split into our departments to get to know each other's language moving forward so that we better understand how people receive and give appreciation in the workplace. And after that, we held what we called a speed dating activity around each other's languages. So in case you were curious, we fell into the following categories. We're, I think, let me do the numbers really fast. There was about 25 of us that took the assessment. Or actually closer to 30. So words of affirmation, there were 13 of us, that that was our language. Quality time, there were 10. Acts of service, six, and tangible gifts, two. I would be very surprised if anyone responded with touch at this time in this group either. There was zero, because obviously that's not something we can do right now in the workplace. So as you can see from those numbers, a lot of the staff really like to hear appreciation through communication and words. Or, you know, the, the alternate being quality time. But as you can see, going through this, we really learned a lot about each other and how to better communicate, show appreciation, and really just get to know one another, one another better. Overall, I think the day really helped us get to know each other and continue to build upon what we learned during these two very impactful professional development days. I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for being supportive of those two closed curbside days for us to be able to do this professional development work, as well as your support of the process and the resources in order to help continuing professionally develop the staff. I also hope you found the book useful and will learn from each other this morning as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey Nikki, could you repeat the top, the top three? There were 13 that, of the staff that affirmation. What was the third one?
The second was quality time. There were 10 staff members. And then the third was acts of service, which had six.
Okay. I was really struck by the fact that gifts, you know, only two people were more interested in those, which was surprising.
Or that people didn't want to admit they really like gifts, who knows?
Awesome. So it seems in some ways a little bit counterintuitive for us to do this exercise, but I want to tell you why I think it's interesting. And one of the reasons is that we are not, as trustees, a normal professional group, right? Like, we don't get paid, we don't have an office, we don't see each other in the building all the time. And I think that, you know, I can tell you certainly for myself, the reason that I do this is because I think it's hugely important and it's, it's deeply meaningful to me, right? So there's a sort of built-in appreciation and, and sort of meaningfulness cycle to the work generally. But I think that also, you know, except for voters, we don't have bosses. Usually, we don't hear a whole lot from people unless they've got a problem, which is totally fine and the, you know, sort of way the system works. So I think it's, it's really important that the five of us understand how we all work and recognize what's meaningful to one another. So that's, that's my hope, is that we can kind of get to understand each other a little bit better. I will, I will start us off, and then we can kind of open it up for, for discussion. So I will say that my primary language of appreciation is acts of service, followed by words of affirmation and gifts, gifts was at the bottom for me as well. So I was a, I was an acts of service person. I'm an acts of service person generally in life, too. I'm a big appreciator of stuff happening. It makes a big, makes a big difference to me. And I'll say that one thing that I found particularly interesting in reading through the book, and I'd really like to hear your guys' thoughts, was the emphasis in the, in the section on remote work and how to appreciate people remotely. And that the sort of point is that it just takes so much more effort. You have to be so much more proactive, right? That there's a, there's just a need for that much more intentionality. Like, I need to pick up the phone and say, Camila, I super appreciate what you said at that meeting, because I'm not gonna see you randomly, you know, in the, in the office or in the library or whatever. So that's something that I'm, I'm really gonna keep at the front of my mind. I have a little sticky note about it here on my, on my monitor. But yeah, I'd, I'd love to know what you guys, what you guys found, where you came down and what your thoughts were. Anybody want to volunteer? Camila, yes, crushing it. Go for it.
Good morning. So mine was interesting how, let me go back to my list. Where did it go? My first one was words of affirmation. And my secondary was quality time, and the lowest was actually acts of service, which I find interesting, because when I've done this just in my relationship, my highest one is acts of service. Interesting how they differed in the workplace. Yeah. I think that I also should, like, I, when I, at work, in my work environment, I'm very words of affirmation, giving, you know, praise and, you know, sending emails or leaving notes on people's desk. So I thought it was interesting to see that reinforced with the inventory. And I appreciate the book. I actually checked it out from the library and listened to it, because that was easier, but I appreciate the, the hard copy. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else want to share where they came down? Rush, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, similar to you, Katie, I actually came down acts of service as being number one and words of affirmation being second. And, you know, it definitely is hard in a remote setting to really, you know, have the nonverbal communication that coincides with how we communicate, you know, when we're in the work setting. And it's, it, it really emphasizes the more, the, the greater need to really articulate the words of appreciation even more so, because we don't see each other and, and, you know, we're learning to, to communicate obviously via Zoom, but I mean, you really have to go above and beyond, because even though we can see each other and we can hear each other, it's, you know, there's something definitely missing, you know, as opposed to being in person. The body language is significant in person and just the subtleties of how we communicate. So it's really, I think it's really emphasized the significance and the importance of really using your words of, oh, and or putting things in writing to thank people that we work with and making sure that we're actively listening and responding and letting the other people know that we are listening.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that. I think that's totally right. Terry, Jason, do you guys want to jump in? Go for it, yeah.
Turns out, Camila and I have something in common, and that is that words of affirmation and quality time were number one and two respectively for me as well, which to me, like her, was a little surprising, because it felt like maybe the service element was rise at the time, but it did not. And I think what Rushmore said was interesting, and that having to do with us being sort of disassociated physically. We're always on Zoom and everything else. It's important for people to verbalize that, I realize, when you get a chance, words of affirmation to our coworkers and others around us, simply because it sort of breaks down that electronic filter that we all have to work with these days. That was an interesting comment to me. So it was enlightening, and I liked the book a lot. I would admit I didn't finish the whole thing, but I got well into it and looked like the concept a lot appears to be very popular, too, as an item for management across the country. So it was really a worthwhile exercise for me.
That's great, thanks.
I'll just say, I think for me, similar to Camila, I think in a work, work setting is, is different than personal relationships. I'm not sure if that's the same for everybody, but so for me, in kind of the work settings, it's the words of affirmation and then acts of service in more personal relationships is kind of how I fall down on it. You know, and I've been struggling with this in, in my paid work environment, if you will, as well. You know, for folks that don't know, I'm a union organizer. I negotiate labor agreements. And it's, it's been a struggle, right? Because that's, it's so heavily dependent on that face-to-face interaction and like those very small nuances and, you know, how people react to things and, and being able to really establish those personal relationships. And so it's, it's been tough. So it's, it's, it's good that we're thinking about it in our roles here as well and trying to figure that piece out, because it, you know, it's gonna be at least another six months of this, right? So.
That's exactly, that's exactly right. It kind of leads me on to the, the next thing that I'd like to chat about a little bit, which is, exactly, I think, you know, we're gonna be in a similar scenario for this coming year, certainly for the first half. I wouldn't be surprised if it's, if it's much of this, much of this calendar year. And so one of the things I want to open up for the floor and just kind of think with you all about together is what can we do to help bring that feeling of humanness, of collegiality, of, you know, of community to the work that we do? Given that, you like, we have these structures that we have to exist within, and we have meetings, and we have formality and all of that. And I'm not, you know, advocating that we do away with any of that. Also, it's required by law, so that's, that's a piece. But what can we, what can we do to help sort of humanize this process and just bring some of that collegiality to the front? Because I think we have to be intentional about it. Like, I don't, I don't think it's just gonna like magically happen by accident. I think it's something that we're gonna have to put some, put some attention on and deliberately structure. So I'd be interested to hear if you guys have any thoughts, or if that's something you think is important, because maybe, maybe you don't. Maybe you don't agree with that, and that's totally valid as well. Please, yeah, just go for it.
Yeah, just a more of a clarifying question. When, when you make that, that request for feedback, is it, is it based for the board members themselves, or is it for the people that we serve, i.e. the, the library district or the community as a whole? Or maybe it's all three?
I want to say yes to all three. I think that that's real, because normally, right? Normally, we'd be out there at community meetings, hanging out, chatting to people. There would be a sort of organic give and take. And I know that a lot of us are participating virtually in, in ways as and when we can. But again, it's not, it's not the same, and it's certainly not the same experience that we would, that we would have. So I think, yeah, I think all three categories are important.
I would say that in a, in a universal way, the, the humanness as it returns will be in little, little tiny bits and tiny pieces. And I'll give you a good example, and that is that my daughter, who's an ICU, neonatal ICU nurse at Kaiser, just got her vaccine the other day. And there was something, I don't know if any of you know people or relatives that have gotten the vaccine, but to me, there was something that it felt like you were digging out just one shovel full at a time of this sort of situation that we're all in right now. And it's a universal situation that's wearing everybody down, of course. So to me, a baseline of, you know, having the humanist return to what we do and to our relationship with others has to come just one little piece at a time. And look at my mom, for example, is scheduled to get her vaccination on Monday. And so that's a big deal, you know, she's 88, and that's gonna really take her out of the danger a little bit. In terms of normal, normal, normal see things that are happening around us need to be, you know, marked and celebrated and communicated to other people. I think that's one way, one pathway that I see to kind of, on the road of getting back together. I agree with you, Katie. We won't be face-to-face for another six months at least, which will be close to, I don't know, a year since I've, you know, since we've seen Camila. I did see her the other day at the swearing-in, but that was the first time. So, and that really, I tell you, that made a difference, just being in the office, in Nikki's office, actually having human contact. So my two cents, I think it's gonna return, but it's gonna return slowly and take every milepost that you can and celebrate that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I like that. I like that a lot.
This might be a little too specific, but just hearing Terry's point, because my sister was able to get her vaccine yesterday in Connecticut, since she's a doula. I'm, and I, but I also know that at our work, we're struggling with, with getting healthcare workers to take the vaccine. Right? Like, like, we've got hospitals that if they hit 50% of their staff, they feel like that's good. And at that point, 50% is frankly pointless, right? Like, I'm wondering if maybe we, like, it would be something to think about the library hosting some kind of Q and A info session, maybe try to get a couple of healthcare workers who've taken it, which is something we're doing at my work as well, is kind of doing PSA's and these kind of Facebook Live events and stuff like that. You know, because the same kind of crazy misinformation that sparked this week's, you know, events in DC, like the same things going on around the vaccine, right? And I think, you know, it'd be good for the library to be out in front of that. And, and just being, you know, if there's some kind of local public health specialist that maybe we could invite to just speak to it. You know, I think it'd be good to look at doing something like that, because again, like, the longer that we go without people taking advantage of the vaccine, the longer we're gonna be in this mess, too.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I agree with both what Terry and Jason said, and it, you know, it is certainly difficult if you can't take action of some kind. I mean, I'm kind of oriented towards actions of service, so it, the inability to actually do something is, is, is a challenge for me. And certainly, words of affirmation only goes so far. I mean, for me personally, I need to be able to do something. And certainly with what's happened in the Capitol, certainly things around the issues of taking the vaccination. I think that if, and I agree that we should, I'd like to see something where we would be hosting virtually, you know, discussions about that and bringing in experts if we could to discuss these things. And that certainly is a community, you know, what happened in DC, and I'm sorry I'm rambling here, but, you know, I think that this is a moment in time where, you know, this is where Altadena is. That's the beauty of Altadena is that we are diverse, and I think that we should be having discussions about that, because there's a lot of hurt across the country in certain segments of, of the country, and certainly that would across the country in certain segments of, of the country. And certainly that would trickle down to Altadena as well. And it'd be nice to be able to have discussions about that and, you know, to reflect to, because the library is a community hub, I think that really, I see this is an opportunity of action to, to be and convene some sort of dialogue and, and listening feelings, because I think that's really, that's all we have now is we can't be together with this. No actions we can take other than bringing people to have discussions and educate people the best we can. If there was some space that we could fill to do that, I feel like we would make, making a difference.
So this is, it's a hard question for me. Just, I'm gonna be honest, just because personally where I am is, is, it's hot, like Terry, your example of the, you know, digging the, the shovel, with the shovel out of the hole. I'm like deep in the hole. So it's a hard question for me to really answer. And I just, you know, I just wanted to put that out there and just be honest in terms of where I'm at. But that being said, I really like the, the idea that you had, Jason, in terms of opening, just broadening communication for people and having, you know, the opportunity. I went to a really good town hall, you know, specifically regarding the vaccine. It was really helpful to be able to hear from the Department of Public Health officials and ask questions and you know, that was really helpful. I think in terms of in that, in that vein and with communication, I think it would be interesting to also, just how you presented the question here, Katie, to ask you know, the community, the library community in terms of what would be helpful and beneficial, you know, to them. Is there a certain, is there a way that we can communicate with them to hear from them? What might, what they might find helpful on a, on a smaller scale? And, and I, I think, you know, again, on a smaller scale and personally, even for like this meeting, what I was thinking about this morning is I was like scrambling to get ready. You know, I would have loved, you know, having more time to like, could, you know, I have dropped a cup of coffee off at someone's, you know, on someone's porch, you know, or you know, something like that to just kind of make personal contact with people in a safe way. And I don't know, you know, what that means, if, you know, people would have had to like spray it down with alcohol before they drank it, but I just, that's what's important to me is finding ways to connect with people while also respecting, you know, the, the public health crisis. So I think that if we could think of even small ways to do that, that would, you know, that would be really helpful.
I really, I really appreciate that thought, Camila, and I think that you know, it's sort of, it's sort of what has been at the back of my mind as I've been thinking about all of this is like, yes, there is, you know, sort of our organizational emphasis as a convener of discussions and, and, and that's important, right? And I, I totally hear you, Jason. I think it's, it's a great idea to think about how we can help educate and, and, you know, sort of be out there at the, at the forefront of, of what can often be quite difficult conversations and, and, you know, provide a space for those conversations to happen. That's hugely important. But I, I, I guess where I'm thinking is, is almost more just on a person-to-person level, like what is it that, you know, I can do in the next month or two months that would be meaningful? What is it that, and maybe that's just making sure I put time in my schedule to like give each of you an actual call on the phone and like, ask how you're doing, you know, it's that, that's sort of what I'm, I'm thinking about is like, how can, how can we how can I, you know, cultivate that spirit of collegiality? Given that we're in the situation we're in, right? Like, that's not gonna change. That's fine. And I don't want to wait six months to continue building relationships. Do you know what I mean? Like, I think, I think that it's important to think about what we can do now, so that when we are all back together, you know, at some point in the future, we are that much stronger and we're that much more connected. And I, I think about it in terms of, of you all as my colleagues on the board, and I think about it too, and in terms of, you know, folks in the community and like making sure that, you know, am I actually reaching out to folks that I've encountered in our work previous to now and, and asking how they're doing? And I think that sometimes it's easy to be very focused on a program or a problem or a, a specific issue, but I think for, for me, one of the intentions that I'm setting for this year is just to just to create space to ask people like how they actually are, like, how's it actually going? Thursday of this week was the three-hundredth day in a row that my husband and I have been in our apartment without going anywhere. That is a lot of days, you guys, like, and I am incredibly grateful that we have a place to be and, you know, I can work from, like, there are so many things that I feel really fortunate about, but at the same time, like, there is a reality that everybody has different challenges and different struggles, and they're even more invisible than they usually are. You know, because we only see each other in these little boxes on the screen. So I don't know, that's, like I said, I'm, I'm kind of thinking about like what I can, what I can do in a deliberate way to try to bring some of that human connection, because it, I think it really matters. Oh, Terry, sorry, you're muted.
Having gone through the this categorization of what is important to us, and we all know what that is, and we all need a hug, every one of us, we're way overdue for hugs. And so if words of affirmation for me is a, is a substitute hug, you know, and we all know that about each other, you know what it is, I mean, that's, that's the place to go. So that was a very, in that regard also, this is very useful in this particular time.
I love that, yeah. My hug quotient is low.
So, so low. I, I actually had a shock to the system not long ago of a friend of mine who helps us with, she used to always help us walk our dogs. She moved to San Luis Obispo, and so she came by, you know, to say goodbye, and she hugged me and I'm like, like, I was really happy that she did, but then also slightly terrified that she did. So it's, um, yeah, it's definitely the hug quotient is super, super low. There's only, you know, so many hugs that you can get from your family. Especially if you are, you know, we didn't really go into that in this, in this book, but especially if you are, you know, a person that needs touch and, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's right. That's exactly right. You know, to kind of come back to a, a question or a point that you made earlier, Rush, and you said, you know, are we thinking about one another as, as board colleagues, or you think about the community, or you think about the library district? And, and one of the things that I think about as well is, you know, with staff being at home, with the library buildings being closed, people working remotely, there's also not the opportunity to get to know all of the people who do the work in our libraries, you know, and so I, you know, Nikki and I have talked about this a bit, but one thing that we've done in the past, and I think Jason, Terry, you guys will remember, I think we did this with Cindy when she was serving as interim director, but we set aside a little bit of time at staff meetings on a semi-regular basis, and we asked trustees to just show up to staff meetings and kind of hang out and, and get to know people a little bit, like, not that there's any like official function that we need to serve or any like duties to perform, but just to make sure that like, we know the names and faces of everybody in the organization. There's not even forty people. Like, we need to make sure we actually know all of these, all of these folks who are working so hard. So I wanted to throw that out there as a, as a potential tangible option as well going forward this year. Is that something you guys would be interested in doing? Do you think it has merit?
Absolutely. I'd, I'd be in, you know, just to be, just to be present, not to be, you know, there as, as necessarily a trustee, but just, just to, you know, interact with people.
That's right. That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And just to, yeah, put faces to names, get to know what, you know, who people are and sort of normally, we could walk into the building and I could, you know, chat with whoever's at the, at the information desk, but it's obviously a little bit tougher to do that right now.
Yeah, I would really welcome that myself, because I can't even remember the names of a lot of people, haven't, haven't seen them for so long. I'm trying to, do they wear, while they're on duty, do they wear name tags? I can't quite remember that either. Nikki, do you know?
The staff have badges, yes. And actually, we just bought a new badge-making machine, so everybody has new ones.
Great, well then.
Quickly, no, I was gonna say, because, you know, when I first went and got, if you will, sworn in, Nicole, Nicole was kind enough to give me a quick tour, but I, just due to COVID, I felt so uncomfortable, you know, just go, Nikki, I can't go and shake anyone's hand. So it was really so, it was just, felt so sterile. It just, you know, I would love to be able to get to know the staff a, a little better than just kind of briskly walking through the library and waving from twenty feet away. It just, it just, this didn't feel right. So I would definitely welcome it.
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe Camila can get together with Christopher and, and figure out how we can use that drone for the coffee, coffee delivery.
Now, I'm sure Christopher already has, yeah, an elaborate system of coffee delivery that he's mapped out. I love that. All right. Well, I think, you know, I think that this is, again, something that I want to keep open as a conversation. And also, I would encourage you guys to think about sort of what we can do as, as colleagues and as trustees to just, again, be really intentional about bringing some of this human connection to the table. And maybe it's, you know, something as simple as during a trustee report, you want to share a book you read that you thought was really impactful or something, you know, like, we don't always have to just be like making motions and seconding them and stuff, like we, it, it is okay to say something that's, you know, meaningful and important to you personally. And I think actually, the more we do that, the, the better we are. And you know, it, it also kind of relates to a, a thing that I've, I've discussed with, with all of you guys in, in various iterations of various times, which is, you know, we're not all of us gonna be library trustees forever. Like, we need to make sure that people run for these seats, that they engage in the process. And one thing that I have heard consistently is it can feel very unapproachable and very formal and very, even, even during non-pandemic times, right? That it can just feel like this very like, I don't really know what that is. I don't really know what people do. And I feel like the more we can be actual humans and be accessible and yes, do the work that we need to do, but do it in a very human and, and approachable way. I think that probably does more to break down some of those barriers and, and make it feel like something that's understandable and accessible than anything else. So I, I would just, I would just ask you to kind of put that in the back of your mind as well and kind of percolate on it. And I'm always excited to hear thoughts or suggestions. I really, anytime, I would be delighted to to hear your thoughts.
I think that that's a great, I'm glad that you said that, because, you know, it does feel very formal, especially over Zoom, which you know, I don't know, makes me a little bit. And then again, we part, we were just getting to know each other. So I think that it's nice to know, you know, it's also hard to know, like, when do I say this or when is it appropriate? It's not on the calendar, like, is it? You know, so I think it's helpful to hear that. And I also agree that, you know, adding some, you know, humanity and personality into the mix will definitely serve to, you know, accomplish that goal of just, you know, creating more connections between us. But it is hard to do over Zoom and yeah, and, and, and it's because it's such a formal setting. So it's just acknowledging that is helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's right. And I, I also think that, you know, one thing I want to be really deliberate about too is just making sure there is no cost for asking questions or saying something, you know what I mean? Like, there's no problem ever with just throwing out a question or asking, and if, if it's procedurally something we have to deal with at a different time, fine, like, we can do that. But you know, our, our core values are really grounded in empathy. And I just, I want it to feel okay to ask questions, to be curious, to say, actually, why are we even doing this like this? Like, why does it work like this? And sometimes there's a good reason and, you know, sometimes there's not. And I think asking those kinds of questions and just bringing that curiosity is really important, because a lot of times, I imagine that's how we'll find better ways to do things and smarter and more human ways to do things. Any other thoughts that anybody'd like to, to talk about? We've got a couple of minutes. I also am mindful of the fact that we have a pretty packed schedule, so I, if we've got a little bit of time, I'd love to give us a couple of minutes before we, before we start with Mike at ten. So if it's okay with everybody, maybe we'll, maybe we'll just take a quick break. We can look at a different screen, whatever you want to do. I have to get more coffee. And so let's, uh, let's take a quick break and we can, we can come back at maybe five to ten and just, just get back together and then bring on our, our first presentation. Does that work for everybody?
Yes, I'm gonna get tea and turn on the heater, because my toes are cold.
Yes. Awesome. All right, guys. Thanks. I'll see you in just about ten minutes. Awesome. All right, guys. Thanks. I'll see you in just about, uh, 10 minutes.
You're just really holding on to things with that Christmas tree, aren't you?
I'm on to it. I'm on to it. Well, you know, the issue was, like, I was so late getting it up that I felt like I needed to get my, you know, full infusion of Christmas. And like, I mean, Epiphany was just the sixth. So I feel like it's totally, it's totally fine. Right? Orthodox Christmas was yesterday, I think. So I feel, I feel like I'm good. It's coming, it's coming down this weekend, but, I know, I'm kind of sad about it.
Yeah, I'm just hoping I can actually go home to Connecticut next year.
Mm-hmm.
But it'll end up being almost three years because of this stupid pandemic.
Gosh, it's crazy. That is absolutely crazy.
Jason, that was the best description of your job that I've heard so far, when you talked about it earlier today. So, yeah, what you do. So I will never watch Normal Ray again without thinking about you. We're glad we're workers together and stuff.
And it's, it's been insane. Um, I have, every Monday morning, I have a, a director's call that's for the whole organization. And then on Wednesdays, we have a director's meeting most of the day just for my division. And, um, we, we came into this week and it's, it's at the point now where every Monday morning, we get an update on the number of healthcare workers just from our organization that have died of COVID. We lost, uh, four over the weekend and I think we're at 26 total. So it's, including, uh, the mayor of Long Beach, his mom, she was one of our members.
I, you know, you mentioned the number of that are not taking the vaccine. And I read about that in the LA Times, too. Which was really surprising to me.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, it's, it's crazy. I think a lot of it is, is honestly still just disgust from the, I unfortunately still have to say, current administration. I mean, that's, it's just trying to get people past all of that rhetoric and understanding, like, look, it's been, it's been scientifically vetted at this point, you know? Um, I'll admit that, you know, six months ago, I was on the same bandwagon. But at this point, like, when the majority of, of the science community is saying it's good to go, like, you, you know.
Completely off topic, but, um, I don't know if you saw the news, Tommy Lasorda passed away.
Oh, no, that's too bad. Just today, huh?
Yes.
Wow.
That is sad.
Come on, 2021, you can start off better than that.
Maybe they're doing it anyway, date, the cutoff date.
Maybe, maybe I did see something on the internet. Um, and it was like, I did the seven day trial for 2021, but I, I think, let's just try the next one. I don't, I don't want to subscribe.
Coworker told me yesterday, she's like, it's not 2021 yet. It's Jill, December 38th. That's what it is.
December 38th. I love that. Oh, my God. All right, guys. So 10 o'clock, uh, or just as good as. So we're gonna dive back in. Um, our next, uh, item on our agenda is a chance to hear from Mike Williams, who, as you guys know, worked with us, um, during the whole process of the CFD formation. So this is the sort of very last piece of that process. Um, and we are very grateful that he's, uh, got some time to come and chat with us today. So, Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about, uh, what we're, what we're gonna chat about with you today?
Let's take a break for 10 minutes.
Yeah.
To help you create reminders, I need your permission to allow personal results on this device.
Google. Not helpful, Siri.
Uh, good morning. Yeah, um, uh, my name is the only name on this, but, uh, just wanted to start out by saying that I, I have a couple of my coworkers that are gonna be involved in the presentation as well. Jim Pritchard and Shannon Harris. And just to give a little bit of an introduction about, uh, our firm and, and, um, you know, basically what we do. Our technical title is we're municipal financial advisors. And we're regulated and, um, licensed by the Securities and Exchange Commission. So, uh, before the Great Recession, uh, anybody could hang on a shingle and say, hey, I'm a municipal advisor. And there was no requirement for education, experience, continuing education, any of that. But that has all since changed. So our, our job is, uh, strictly with governmental agencies. So that, those are all our clients. And also, interestingly enough, uh, myself, uh, Jim and Shannon all have prior, uh, government, uh, experience. So that, I think, kind of helps understand and appreciate uh, the position of board members and staff. So, um, I think we're gonna go ahead and go. And Natalia is gonna, you know, uh, help us, uh, work through the slides. Uh, so I think we're ready for the next slide, Natalia. Okay, one of the things that I like to talk about, um, with, uh, uh, board members and staff is that, um, a lot of times you may get, uh, constituents say, you know, why do we have to borrow money? Why can't we just, you know, pay cash for things? It's, you know, it's expensive and, and that kind of thing. So, uh, anytime I've given a presentation, I like to go over, uh, different, you know, financing options. And one of them is called Pay As You Go. And that is using internal financing for capital projects. So you're paying with cash on hand or in reserves. And there is a benefit to that. Uh, you don't have any financing cost. And that's, uh, it's good for, you know, uh, lesser dollar items, uh, and usually with short useful lives. But the bad thing about Pay As You Go is that expensive projects, uh, usually have long useful lives. And, uh, there's a requirement, uh, to have annual excess revenue and accumulate that over a number of years. So where this really, uh, comes home is that there's a kind of intergenerational equity there. So the taxpayers that are paying taxes that are accumulated to buy projects in the future, they don't get the benefit uh, of their current taxes paid. So the other option is what we call Pay As You Use, and that's external financing. And expensive capital projects are financed over their useful lives. So that matches, you know, kind of the expenditure with, with the life. Project costs are spread over long periods of time, which is budget friendly. Um, the current and future taxpayers get the benefit of the capital projects that are paid with their tax dollars over the lives of the financing. But then, you know, as opposed to Pay As You Go, uh, there are financing costs to be incurred. Uh, but as everybody is aware, uh, we're in really historic times here. As far as interest rates are concerned, they're very, very low. So if you could, uh, go to the next slide. So basically, there are two primary, uh, financing options for the Altadena Library. And the first one is a, uh, a bank loan or what we refer to as a private placement. So, um, with the bank loan, we only have one investor. Okay, so it's a, a bank or a financial institution. And they're gonna make the loan, uh, directly to, uh, the issuer. And so then the question is, well, you know, what do they do with the loan once they make it? Is there a restriction on resale? And, and yes, there is. Uh, it's usually that they have to sell the, uh, the whole loan or transfer the loan uh, to another entity or not at all. So they can't go out and, and, uh, you know, get individual investors and, you know, kind of, um, uh, securitize that loan. It's just the one loan. And there are some limitations with that. Um, and that really depends on the lender. Usually, the longest term that they would, um, be interested in is 15 years uh, and less. But there are some banks that are looking to go out as far as 20 years. And like a mortgage, uh, it has one interest rate with a series of payments. Okay? And the other, um, option would be to is, issue municipal bonds. So the number of investors in municipal bonds, uh, could vary, but I, I would say normally it's at least 50 and sometimes hundreds or e- even thousands of investors. Uh, the restrictions on resale of those individual bonds, there usually aren't any unless it's like a below investment grade. I think you could, uh, uh, maybe compare this or think about the, uh, the high-speed train that they were gonna do from, um, uh, what was it? Apple Valley to Las Vegas? And they were gonna sell, you know, like several billion dollars of bonds. Well, that kind of debt, uh, below investment grade would have like minimum denominations or some other restriction. Uh, the limit on the loan size and maturity, uh, the municipal bond market is very large with a lot of investors. And, uh, the loan term, you know, could go out to 30 or more years. And the way, uh, a bond issue works is that each individual maturity, uh, each year of the, of the term of the, the loan is broken into separate pieces and sold to different investors at different interest rates. So as opposed to the bank loan where you have, uh, just one loan with one interest rate, you get to take advantage of the different interest rates over what we call the yield curve. So a one-year, uh, maturity would have a lot lower rate than the final year. And they also are sold to different investor classes. They could be, um, you know, sold to people like, uh, all of us on, on the call here. Uh, individual investors, they're also sold to insurance companies and mutual funds and so forth. So it's a big market. Okay, next slide, please. Um, so once again, the bank loan private placement, uh, the best terms uh, for loans are usually under $20 million with the fa- final maturity of, uh, up to 15 years. Um, the cost for, um, doing a loan like this are, are fairly low. Because wi- with the bank, they have their own credit department. They're sophisticated investors and they do their own credit evaluation. Uh, also, there are less regulatory issues, uh, with the sale of securities. You know, we have to have more attorneys involved. And, um, these investors, uh, prefer shorter-term debt. But that also makes the loan higher. It's the same as, like, whether you have a 15-year mortgage or a 30-year mortgage. So a 30-year mortgage, you have lower payments, uh, higher interest rate and, uh, opposite, um, for, um, that. Uh, issuance of municipal bonds, it's usually best for loans, uh, you know, at or above $7 million. And, uh, because of the costs involved, you probably wouldn't want to do anything shorter than 10 years. So higher dollar amounts, longer term, uh, works best to amortize all those costs over, uh, a number of years. And, um, the, uh, with the low interest rates now, uh, that makes it really good. And also, as I mentioned before, um, having a longer, uh, loan term, uh, makes for lower annual payments. Uh, one thing I didn't mention, uh, when I started off the presentation here is if there's any questions as we go, I think we have plenty of time, uh, to have questions during, but then we'll also have time for questions, uh, later on. So if somebody has a question, you know, please, uh, please just go ahead and, um, uh, ask the question.
So do you mind if I jump right in, Michael?
Oh, go ahead. Thanks, Jason.
Um, so I think what, and, and the one thing I'm just trying to wrap my head around, because I'm just seeing kind of some of the different rules here, right, is, is we are most likely looking, you know, we've, uh, you know, have been privileged that the voters have given us the trust to manage up to $24 million in bonds. Um, but it's also, it's been very clear through this whole process, like, we're not gonna be able to issue all of that all at once. I- is there a way just to avoid having like a bunch of different expiration terms that once all of them are kind of issued out in piecemeal at some point in the future to then consolidate that down into a single kind of, I don't know if maturation is the right word or, or what the word is, but.
Yeah, let me, let me, uh, address that because maybe what I said was not clear or it was confusing. We have discussed, or the board has discussed, uh, having, uh, probably two, uh, separate bond issues. Uh, because as you mentioned, if, if, you know, we issued the 24 million all at once, that would be a, a pretty big impact uh, on the property tax, uh, bill. So what we were thinking about doing, but, you know, this is up to the board and you're gonna have probably at least one study session about this, um, is probably to have two bond issues for about $12 million each. So we would, we would, uh, sell $12 million worth of municipal bonds. And in that bond issue, And in that bond issue, we would sell bonds with different maturities and different interest rates. But it would be for the one bond issue. And there would be level payments. So, you know, like a mortgage, you're going to pay the same thing every payment. But the loan is basically, basically cut up into individual pieces and sold off to different investors because some people, you know, they don't want to have a, a loan or an investment for, say, more than five years or 10 years or whatever the term is. So does that kind of answer the question? So you'd probably only have two bond issues outstanding. But inside the bond issue, there are different maturities of bonds depending on, you know, the investor, what the investor goal is.
Okay, but, but that money, there, there still is some kind of set time limit within which that money needs to be spent though, correct?
Well, that's, yeah, that's a separate issue. So when you borrow the money, the Internal Revenue Service only wants you to borrow money when you need it. So when you issue bonds, the district would have to sign a certificate saying that they intend to spend that money within 36 months.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then I was going to talk about the higher loan fees. Why are they higher in the municipal bond issue? Well, because we have laws related to the public sale of securities. Also, the district is going to have to do an offering document, which will be reviewed by potential investors and there needs to be, you know, scrutiny and due diligence about what goes in there to meet the requirements for a security sale. And also, there's a credit rating process. You know, if we get a, if we get a mortgage, the lender will, you know, get a, get our FICO score or something. We have something similar like that in the bond process that we'll discuss on another slide. So there's a, there's a whole credit rating process and there's some, some other things. So that's why the fees are a little bit higher. Okay, next slide. So Shannon is going to discuss the professionals involved in the debt issuance.
Great, thanks, Mike. So I'm going to go over who are the common participants? The order, you know, how do we select who's going to be involved and in which order? And, you know, why are there so many people involved in a bond issuance? And what role does each of these consultants play? So next slide, please. Okay, so here we see just a broad overview of all of the participants. You know, you see in the middle, Altadena Library District, the municipal advisors, the legal counsel. So I'm going to go into more detail on the specific roles and responsibilities of each of these participants listed here on the next slide. Okay, so starting with the municipal advisor. So our firm, Columbia Capital, we are a registered municipal advisor, as Mike had mentioned earlier. And the Government Finance Officers Association Best Practices recommends that a government agency borrower retain a municipal advisor prior to undertaking a debt financing, unless they have sufficient in-house expertise and current access to bond market information. However, I'd like to also note that even large frequent issuers that do have this in-house expertise, such as the city of Los Angeles, you know, a lot of counties throughout Southern California, they also still elect to hire municipal advisors on their bond transactions. And the municipal advisor and the municipal law firm are generally the first consultants that are retained in this process. And it's also recommended that they are hired prior to the underwriters or any of the other professionals that will be joining the financing team. Next slide, please. Okay, so what does a municipal advisor do? So one of the most important things, I think, of a municipal advisor or aspects to being a municipal advisor that really differentiates us from a lot of the other participants in the financing is that we have a fiduciary duty to our clients. And the rules and guidelines for those fiduciary duties are adopted by the SEC. And so the municipal advisor is essentially a team leader on this financing. So we're going to prepare a financing calendar, you know, the timeline of, of what the transaction is going to look like, recommend a debt structure, bond loan covenants. We will present the financing options to the board and the staff and prepare a plan of finance that also contemplates, you know, kind of future debt issuance, not just specifically the bond issuance at hand. As Mike mentioned, you know, breaking it up into the two different debt issuances of 12 million. So we'll take a, a broader look at the district's financing plans. We also assist bond counsel in drafting and reviewing on legal documents. We assist other consultants in the preparation and review of the documents. We will meet with staff and the board for review, discussion, your consideration and approval of the financing documents. It will also direct and assist the bond sale. We'll assist in the closing of the bond issue and assist the staff after the receipt of the funds for the project. And we're also available if any issues come up following the closing of the transaction. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, one of the other initial participants that's, that starts on this financing is the legal counsel. They will assist in complying with the legal and administrative tasks for issuing debt. So the bond counsel is going to draft the legal documents. These will formalize the bond structure. It will provide the rights and obligations to the financing parties. The documents are going to contain standard provisions. So some of those standard provisions include the term of the bond, you know, how many years it is, what the interest rate is, what the redemption features are. We'll go into that in more detail when we, we discuss the financing plan with the district and define the basic terms of the issue. And the bond counsel will also provide a bond tax opinion. You know, so as this is a tax exempt financing, they'll provide an opinion on that. Next slide, please.
Shannon, can I jump in with a real quick question here?
Sure.
Okay, there's, I've been reading about something called an official statement that needs to be issued as well. Is that covered by the, the legal firm or by the municipal advisor?
Great question. So we're actually getting into this right now on this next slide.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. Yeah, so that actually will be assisted, you know, the disclosure council, they will assist the district in preparing that official statement. So they're going to write up the official statement and the district is going to provide them the information that is going to go into that official statement. So for example, you know, financial statements, general information about the district, background, everything that is material information to investors. So the people that are going to be buying these bonds, they're going to want to read this official statement to see, you know, are they interested? Is this a good investment? What's the risk to them? So it's kind of like a marketing tool that they use to provide to investors. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I just wondered whose role that was and.
Right, yeah, so that will be, that will be the disclosure council. But we also assist, so we will assist the district in reviewing the documents, providing any comments on the documents, you know, what other information should be included? Or, you know, how can this be reworded? Or what's the best way to present the district in this offering document? So it's, it's really multi-disciplinary, so we'll have a lot of people involved. But I would say the lead person in preparing that is going to be the disclosure counsel.
Okay, thanks so much.
No problem. And so they're going to also make sure, you know, it's complete and accurate, all the information in, in an investigation into the issuer's financial position. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, also, you know, we have extensive document review by all the participants involved in the financing. The next role I'm going to discuss is the bank trustee. So the bank trustee is an independent third party. So what they're going to do is enforce the provisions of the bond indenture. So the bond indenture, that's one of the legal documents that will be prepared by bond counsel. And they are going to receive, the, the bank trustee is going to receive the debt service payments from the issuer, for example, which would be the library district. And that will be paid out to the investors. And when I say library district, it technically would be the, the taxpayers that are paying the, on their tax roll to fund the, the debt issuance. So in that, that's kind of the flow of process there for the trustee. Next slide, please. Okay, so now I'm going to turn it back over to Mike and he's going to go over the special tax consultants and all the details that that entail.
Okay, as, as the board knows, the special tax consultant was very involved in the initial discussions about how to deal with the pending, you know, termination or expiration of your parcel tax. And so the special tax consultant is a, a group of people that are very familiar with different legal structures to help meet the goals of issuers. And so with, with regard to the, the CFD, there was the discussion about, well, you know, do we need to have another election to reapprove our parcel tax? Or is there another way to do that? And also, the, the library district wanted to do some capital projects. So in consultation with the special tax consultant, there was a, you know, development of a financing structure. And the, the document that's, that was developed is called a rate method of apportionment. And so what that does is that is, you know, how the money is raised, how individual property owners are assessed and so forth. Now, a CFD can either be just for capital projects. And that's often the case, like for development of residential property, or it may include a service component such as what the district is going to do once the parcel tax is sunsetted. So the service component goes directly to the issuer's general fund. And it provides, and it also can provide a funding source for acquisition and construction, which is what's going to, you know, be included with the district's CFD. So there's pre-election work and then there's the post-election work. So the post-election work, your special tax consultant is going to provide information and assist in the offering document, the official statement. And so that the potential investors will be able to read that document and understand what the credit profile is. Who, who is the money being raised from? How many parcels? Is it residential, is it commercial, is it industrial? Is it developed property, is it undeveloped property, all those things? So the special tax consultant is going to be involved in the bond issuance process. And also, they're going to be working with the district on an annual basis, just like they are currently on the parcel tax. So the special tax consultant determines the amount of tax that needs to go in the tax roll and how that tax is assigned to various parcels. So they'll be involved with the district for as long as the CFD is active. So next slide, please. Okay, and Jim Pritchard is going to take over and discuss some other professionals involved in the financing.
Yeah, yes, thanks, Mike. So just continuing on here with other potential professionals that we would have involved in, in our bond issue. Bond rating agencies, you have Moody's, S&amp;P and Fitch is, is the three primary agencies. And what they do is they provide a credit opinion and analysis on, on debt. And ultimately, the investors would use that to help inform their decision on whether or not they should purchase your bonds. Down there at the bottom left-hand screen, you'll see a rating grid that shows the different rating levels for investment-grade debt. So the highest rating that you could have is AAA. And the lowest rating that you could have and still be investment-grade is triple B minus. There are ratings below that, double B, single B, but those would be considered highly speculative bonds. In terms of pursuing a rating, you can pursue a rating from all three agencies, from one or two or in, from any agency that, that you, you wish. That's something that you would work with us to help determine. One, do you need a rating? And two, which firm should you go with? And we certainly do a cost-benefit analysis of, you know, does the cost of the rating and the work involved outweigh the, or yeah, outweigh the, the benefit that, that you would get? So, next slide, please. Another potential professional in your bond issue could be a bond insurer. There are two active insurers in the marketplace today, Build America Mutual and Assured Guaranty. And what they do is they would guarantee that the debt service underbonds would be paid in full and on time. And that gives investors comfort to know that their investments will pay. And basically, what we do there is we would look at the cost of that insurance, which is based on a percentage of debt service and compare that to the debt service savings or the interest cost savings that you would receive from having that insurance. Because the insurance would likely make your bonds more marketable and open up a larger investor base.
Jim, a question with, with Z passing, does that, does that mean that we necessarily need a bond insurer? Or is, is it just the optics? I mean, I've seen bond insurers before, but I just to understand if you've got a, a specific passage that will provide the debt services, is the bond insurer necessary?
We don't know. Is it necessary? No, absolutely not necessary to, to get your bond deal done. It's, it's more of, because, because we, we'd expect that the, the credit of the district to be certainly well in the investment grade range. It's really more of a cost-benefit analysis. The, the insurers have been quite a bit more active in the marketplace the last few years. And it's, it's very common, especially in California, to obtain bond insurance on, on a lot of different transactions. Not needed to, to sell the bonds, but could help lower the cost of your loan. And so we.
It'll help with the rating, you're saying, even notwithstanding the fact that we've got the taxpayers have voted this. So you're saying that, that, that a bond insurer would, would boost the, the rating and therefore reduce the overall cost?
It, it would, it would boost the rating on the bonds. It wouldn't have anything to do with the district's underlying rating. But the rate on, on bonds, yeah. The bond insurers are both rated double A. And so say, say that we pursue a rating from S&amp;P and you get a rating of single A. And you then get insurance, the bonds would, would carry the higher of the two ratings. So they would carry the, the insured rating of double A. And that would help lower your interest cost.
Jim, I think there's one other point that we should make too. With bond insurers, you know, the, the, the credit and the, kind of the credit profile of who, you know, is going to be responsible for paying debt service. You know, it's going on the tax roll and so forth. But if you think about, you know, coronavirus now, any issuer that has bond insurance, if for whatever reason their revenues have declined and they don't have money to make their debt service payments, if they're, if they're, they have bond insurance, then those investors will still get paid. So there's a, there's a credit aspect to it. You know, what is the, the issuer's ability to pay? But, you know, things occur, there could be, you know, there could even be a seismic event and there's damage, you know, to the you know, to the properties and maybe the value goes down, all those kind of things. So it's it's not just, you know, the credit worthiness of the issuer, it's also other things that could happen that could, you know, cause a default.
Thank you for that.
Next slide, please. All right, so lastly, you have the underwriter. And the underwriter is on a capital markets deal, certainly required to to get your bond issue done. And what their role is, is they buy the bonds from you, the issuer. And then they sell them ultimately to investors, which is their customers. And the difference between what they pay you and what they sell to the investors is their compensation, that spread is is their compensation. And so here, in the middle of the page, we just have a little graphic here to sort of represent what's going on here. It's basically an arms-length transaction between the issuer and the underwriter. And I think the key thing to take away about the underwriting relationship is they're not your advisor. And more importantly, they're not your fiduciary. Their only requirement is to deal fairly with you. They don't have to transact in a way that's in your best interest. They can transact in a way that's in their best interest. Our job as your municipal advisor is to be your fiduciary, and that's not the underwriters' role.
I'm just gonna jump in here real quick and say something for the record, because I think it bears repeating. So I think it's important to note that you all worked with us during the CFD formation. But we do have to undergo an RFP process. So it could be you all, it could be another firm, it could be, you know what I mean? Like, I'm just, I I I think it's important to say that we are going to have to go through a process, an RFP process of bringing on all of these different professionals, and we can talk more about that timeline as well. But I do want to make sure that the board's aware that, like, that's a that's a thing that we'll be seeing unspool over the course of the next couple of months. So just to just to bear that in mind.
And then next slide, please. So once you have your team assembled to go through the all the RFP process, in assuming that you do a capital markets transaction and not a private sale, like Mike described earlier, you have two basic options to to effectuate your cell, either competitive sale or a negotiated cell. For a competitive sale, you're in a situation where you have the transaction all buttoned up, you know exactly what your structure is going to be. You have a rating in hand, documents are near final. And then you pick a date and a time and you hold an auction online where underwriters bid on your bonds. We have a website that accommodates that. And basically, the underwriter that gives you the the lowest cost loan wins. So when might a competitive sale be the best route for your bond sale? Well, if it's a sort of a plain vanilla, common bond structure like yours, and it has a good, solid investment grade rating, then a competitive sell certainly would would make sense and likely for the districts upcoming sales would would probably be something to consider. Next slide, please. The other option is a negotiated sale. So here, you are not holding an an online auction and awarding the bonds to whoever gives you the best deal. Instead, you are early in the process selecting an underwriter and to work with them throughout the process where they're they're also reviewing legal documents, they're providing thoughts on, you know, when to approach the market, how to market the bonds, things like that. Leading into the cell, they would provide information about the market. So you're educated on that as as well as we would. And would provide other comparable bond transactions that you could use to help form a basis for what's the a correct price for for your bonds. So when would this sell method likely, you know, produce better results? Well, typically, the the larger the bond sale, the more you'd probably lean towards a negotiated cell, not that you couldn't do large competitive cells. But really, the more unique or complicated the bond structure is, the more likely you're going to want to lead lean towards a negotiated cell. Also, if you're wanting to use the underwriter to help structure your bonds, because you have some uncertainty there, or there's a choppy market, like when we saw, you know, March and April this year, and the height of the the pandemic worry, approaching the market with an underwriter are already in hand is likely best. Or if you have a relationship with an underwriter or a group of underwriters that you want to use, then the only way to to do that is is via negotiated cell. So that's when you would use that. Next slide, please. So once you have your bonds priced, whether that's competitive or negotiated, typically, two to four weeks later, you close. So in that time period between pricing and closing, the the lawyers on the deal are finalizing the documents and getting them executed. We're working to figure out all the the logistics and mechanics of money is getting transferred where they need to go. And that that would be sort of the pre-closing where we gather and make sure that everything's ready for the day of closing, which is when you receive your money for your projects and the underwriter receives their bonds for their investors. And we'd gather quickly on a conference call and confirm all the transfers have been made and your bond bond deal would would be closed. So with with that, I think Mike wanted to just kind of give a quick overview about how long this process takes, and then we'll wrap up the presentation.
It's okay, you guys, if I jump in with a quick question for you, Jim, for the slide before this. Competitive sale and negotiated sale?
Yes.
I'm just trying to get that straight in my mind. The underwriter was the last person that you mentioned that would be on the team that we would want to assemble.
Yep.
And the next slide had to do with the negotiated sale and with the competitive sale. Is it fair to say that an underwriter that helps us with a negotiated sale would be more of a full-service type of underwriter? In other words, they they there's all these issues that they work out for us. You described the negotiated sale as having an arms-length relationship with an underwriter. And so I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the about the quality, I guess, of the of the package that you get with an underwriter, with a competitive sale and with a negotiated sale. And also, you mentioned that a negotiated sale might be best for large amounts. And I didn't, I wasn't quite sure what is considered to be a large amount. Do you have a definition to it, large debt issues?
Sure, yeah. Well, first off, I'd say that whether it's competitive or negotiated, the relationship is the same. It's an arms-length transaction between you as the issuer and them as the underwriter. And the duty of care, the the fiduciary duty still does not exist, whether it's negotiated or competitive. In terms of full service, if you mean by that with a negotiated cell, they're part of the working group and have input on the structure and timing and the language in the documents, I guess you could call it that. With a competitive cell, they're not they're not selected until the day of sale. So they're not part of that early process in the financing. So that's they're certainly much less involved. Does that answer that part of the question?
Yeah, yeah. What I was sort of after there is, based on our parameters, if there's a recommendation toward having a negotiated sale or a competitive sale.
Sure. Yeah, I I I answered your other question about the sizing. It kind of depends on the market environment at the time. I've done competitive sells in the billion-dollar range with no issues. I'd say, in my in my mind, large is 100 million plus. Mike Mike might have different ideas on that. For you, for your sale, 24 million total, probably be broken up into maybe two issuances. We we expect your credit to be strong and the structure to be pretty plain vanilla in common. We think a competitive cell would would probably be best in this situation.
Okay, good. That answers my question. Thanks.
Just before we wrap up here, I'd like to note, so this session is scheduled to end at 10:45. I think it's fine to go a little bit longer, because I know this is really important, and I want to make sure we have we have time for it. But we do have a next one coming on at 11:00. So if we can leave at least a little bit of time before that, that'd be great. But I don't I don't want to cut any of this short, because I think it's it's really crucial that we hear it.
Right. Okay, and this is just kind of a a graph of what the timeline looks like, because often we get a question, well, how long does it take, you know, to get our money for our projects? And so, you know, basically, what we do is is we kind of look backwards. You guys are going to be building capital projects. So it's like, okay, when do you need the money? And this is when we should start. And so the process takes anywhere from two to three months. And and then you can just see the breakdown in the stages here. So we don't need to really go over that. But I think this is, you know, kind of something that the board can hang on to, so that as you go through the bond issuance process, you can, you know, figure out like which stage you're in and and what's going on there. So I think that's pretty much the presentation. But I think I I have another comment about, you know, kind of the negotiated versus the competitive bond sale. We we would normally, well, we would always recommend that the district do a competitive sale unless there's a reason not to. And, you know, when you do a public works project, you're going to have to go out to bid for that, right? Governmental agencies, they go out to bid when they purchase, you know, automobiles and all kinds of things. So it's kind of a transparency issue, really. Because in the community, you know, maybe you have, you know, people that work in the investment banking industry. And so everybody's, you know, like, oh, you should hire, you know, you should hire our firm to to sell your bonds. When you have a competitive sale, everybody has an equal opportunity. All the underwriters across the United States have an opportunity to submit a bid. So everybody's included. And so the district gets the benefit of, you know, the lowest cost financing. And so on the day that the bonds are sold, you know, we would expect the district to get anywhere between, you know, five and and 10 different offers. So if somebody in the community says, well, how was this process? You know, how do we know that, you know, we got a fair deal? You know, basically, you just show the bids that you got. And, you know, you're making people compete for the business just like you do for other things. You know, as I said, if you're buying, you know, computers or your construction contracts will be, you know, put out to bid and so forth. So that's a lot of a lot of information. And so if there's any other questions or clarifications, we'd be more than happy to respond.
If you wouldn't mind, just for our own clarification, just the individual different service providers that we need to procure. Obviously, there's bond counsel, there is the municipal advisor. There's now, there there's different services now. I just make sure that they're we understand who exactly is doing what, or how many different contractors need to get. So municipal advisor, bond counsel. There's the bank trustee, there's there's the tax consultant. So I mean, just you need to break down specifically who we need to bring onboard on an individual basis, because obviously, there's some of the services, like I said, are going to be done by, they'll do several of the functions that you mentioned.
Right. So, you know, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that that that, you know, an issuer engage a municipal advisor first or a bond bond counsel and a municipal advisor. Okay, so those so those should probably be the first ones. Now, the bond law firm that would do bond counsel work can also do disclosure counsel work. So that could be the same firm, or you could have different firms.
So, okay, so the bond counsel would do the disclosure forms, which, yeah, they should be able to do that.
The bond, the bond counsel is the one that drafts all the legal documents and gives an investor an opinion that the interest they receive is tax exempt.
Right.
The bond counsel does. Disclosure counsel is the one that prepares the offering document that investors get. And they're very important, because they're going to give the district an opinion that you've met your disclosure requirement.
Okay. Bank trustee?
Yeah, the bank trustee, it's it's kind, they're kind of like an escrow agent in a real estate transaction. They're an independent third party. And as as Jim mentioned, or maybe it was Shannon mentioned, the bank, the bank trustee is the one that, you know, enforces the provisions of the indenture during the life of the bond issue. But also, you know, the the district will be making their debt service payments not to each individual investor. You'll make the one debt service payment to the trustee, and then the trustee will pay the investor. So that's somebody that's going to be with you for the life of the of the bond issue. And then we talked about the the bond rating agencies. Basically, that's like in, you know, when you get to your home home mortgage, you're, you know, you get the rating agencies. And so that that would be there's no reason why you why you should not do that. There's every benefit to having a bond rating, because it's going to lower the cost of interest.
Oh, absolutely. Just like we talked about the the bond issue, insurer, we would get that as well, most likely.
And one thing about the 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 bond rating, we would get that prior to the bond sale. But for the insurance, we can actually wait up until the sale.
Yeah.
And let's and let the let the market determine, do they really want the bond insurance or not? Because if it if the payment of the bond insurance doesn't reduce the interest cost, then it's, there's no need to do it.
Yeah, exactly. That was my initial question, just because of the the source of the of the debt, the debt service.
Right. It's kind of like having a cosigner, basically.
Okay.
You had mentioned a special tax consultant as well in one point.
Right, that you already you already have a firm that's NBS that helps you with your parcel tax. And NBS also worked on the did all the pre-election work and developed the rate and method of apportionment for the CFD. So that's somebody that the district already has engaged.
Okay.
That is another RFP that we're going to have to put out for the CFD administration as well, because it goes over our $10,000 threshold.
That's correct. Yeah, their current scope of work doesn't include that, but it is definitely something that they have a core competency in.
Right. And if there's any any questions that somebody thinks about later or next week, please feel free to call us. And if there's any, any questions that somebody thinks about later or next week, um, please feel free to call us. Uh, and we will uh, provide uh, information and answers for that.
Uh, and just one more question while I'm thinking about it, and that would be there are, I know some rules about where to park your money while you're using after the, after the sale is completed. So if we yielded ten, twelve million dollars in the sale of uh, a tranche of bonds, my understanding is they have to be invested in a certain way. Is there uh, someone in this group who would be the special tax consultant that could help us with that?
No, um, our firm could actually help you with that. But basically, you know, probably uh, one initial question is who do you want to hold the money? Would you want the, the district to get the money and and be responsible uh, for selecting an investment? Or would you like the trustee to hold the money? And invest it upon your direction and we could help you with the um, suitable investments. Um, and the difference is, is that when, as you get invoices from your contractors, all you'd have to do is submit those to the trustee and those would get paid rather than going through your accounts payable. So those are the kind of things that we'd go through with you and help you make the decisions. And as I mentioned earlier, all three of us have worked for governmental agencies. So we were, we were on your side, you know, of the, of the transaction. So we, we know, you know, what you need help with and and can make recommendations on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I know that I personally am glad we're recording this and that it's on YouTube because I'm definitely going to go back and watch uh portions again. And of course, we've got your slides. I know all the trustees have them, they're posted on the website as well. Um, but I think it just remains for me to thank Mike and the entire Columbia team. Certainly for today, but then also for all of the fantastic support and work that you all uh, brought to the table during the whole CFD formation process. We are very grateful for your, for your assistance and we're excited to be starting this next stage of the game. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you for inviting us to participate.
That's absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, I know uh, John is with us, but let's take a five minute break and we'll come back uh, at eleven and then we'll move into our next presentation. All right, so ten fifty-four, we'll come back at eleven. I'll see you in five minutes. All right, eleven o'clock. Let's come back together here. Okay. Well, thanks, everybody. We're powering through. Everybody doing all right, hanging in there? If we were in the real building, we'd have snacks and it is just so sad to me that I have to provide my own snacks. That's fine. You can do it. Um, all right. So next up, we have a presentation from uh, John Coggins. And Nikki, I wonder if you would be so kind as to introduce John so we all know a little bit more about him. Hi, John.
Sure, happy to do so.
Thanks.
Um, so John Coggins works as an advisor for Reg. Powers Authority on a range of purchasing topics and issues. He's the former Purchasing and Materials Manager for the Orange County Fire Authority and has over twenty-five years experience, progressive experience in public sector procurement. John has served on the Universal Public Procurement Certification Council and the National Procurement Institute's Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Committee. He is skilled in all aspects of supply chain management and familiar with best practices in public procurement. He has a Master of Public Administration from San Jose State University and a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of California, Santa Barbara. He is also a former president with the California Association of Public Procurement Officers and a lifetime certified public procurement officer and certified purchasing manager. Uh, without further ado, we'll turn it over to you, John, and thank you so much for being here with us.
Uh, thank you, Nikki. Thank you for having me. Um, gonna talk about public works today, give you a kind of a brief overview. I could talk about this all day long because there's so much involved. But yeah, I promise I'll limit it, I'll limit it to uh, to just some of the key topics, so. Okay, you folks as a district are an independent special district formed under the Education Code. And therefore, you're not required to follow the public contract code. However, the district will follow similar procedures. That's in your policies and procedures manual. So I'm going to focus primarily on the California Public Contracts Code today because that's what I'm familiar with. I'm not familiar with the Education Code and I'm not sure you guys are really are obligated to follow that um, as much as the Public Contracts Code, so. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a definition of public works. Any project that includes direction, construction, alteration, repair, improvement of public structures, buildings, roads, or any other public improvement of any kind. Now, that definition could be extended to include projects funded with public funds. So uh, it's pretty all encompassing. And one of the things that um, it's a bit challenging is the maintenance part. But we'll get into that a little bit later. Okay, uh, this is a section of the Public Contracts Code that deals with defining the scope of the project. So it's very, very important to really, you know, get a grasp, get your arms around what uh, what it is that you're asking for from the contractors. And so this essentially says, you know, it's really got to be a full and complete plan and specs with an estimate of costs so that a competent builder will know what to do to carry out what it is you're asking for. Now, these are elements of a contract. So once you, you choose a contractor and you decide know who you're going to go with, what project you're going to work on, you want these elements to be included in your contract. And and these are actually good elements to include in any contract, whether it's professional services or, or you're buying something, a commodity from somebody. So again, I, I can't say enough how important the scope of work is. The scope of work really defines the project. Then you want to include performance criteria. So you know, um, if you're going to break out into phases, for instance, you lay a foundation, then you're going to build the, the structure itself. Uh, that kind of thing. You, you, you want those in there, delivery and payment terms. Um, evaluation criteria, what it is that's acceptable to you before you write off and make your payments to the contractor. And depending on the size of the project, you'll likely have progress payments. So you'll be making payments throughout the course of the project being completed. And then, of course, acceptance. At the very end of the project, again, it depends on the project. You'll typically have um, like a checklist that you go through at the end and and you make sure that everything's complete. You retain a little bit of the money before you, you completely pay the contractor and then you write it off and uh, and and the project's complete. Now, um, one way to be sure that your scope is, is complete is to hold a pre-bid conference. And, you know, with the COVID, everybody's doing virtual pre-bids now, um, which really aren't as good as, as actual pre-bid conferences. Because with a pre-bid conference, you assemble the contractors. Now you can make it either mandatory or non-mandatory. If it's non-mandatory, then you tell the contractors that they're obligated to know what occurred during the pre-bid conference before they could submit a bid. If it's mandatory, only the contractors that show up are allowed to submit bids. And pre-bid conferences are, are very, very useful. They're, you usually walk the site, which is what you act, what you want to do because you want to show them the actual conditions. That way also, if something happens later on, you know, contractor complains about something, you say, well, you were there, you saw, you know, what it is we wanted. So uh, pre-bid conferences, very important, answer questions and you get input from the contractors too. Now, if the contractors point something out to you that you hadn't thought of, that hadn't occurred to you, then you can issue an addendum and change that scope of your specs of what it is that you're looking for to achieve. Um, now, the other thing that you can do to control things is to hire a project manager. It's also known as a construction manager. Very, very useful. These guys typically have a contractor's license. Um, they know how to talk to the contractors. Uh, they know what they're looking for, they know if this guy's trying to get over on them, that kind of thing. So, and they run the whole thing, so there's a single point of contact. And they'll sign off on the project once it's complete. So um, that's a separate contract that you would issue for your construction itself. Okay, risk, risk mitigation, or risk avoidance. This is key. This is so important for you as an agency um, to, to protect yourselves. And um, I'll give you some examples. All right. Contractors mean well, they uh, they, they get very creative. They'll, they'll do what they can to get the job done, but it's not always the best way of doing things. So you really have to protect yourself from some of these guys. The guy on the left there, he's got a plank supported by a ladder and then the railing itself. And he, he's doing something, I don't know, he's painting or patching a, a column up there on the, on the roof. Um, the other guy, I don't know what he was thinking. That, that whatever that job is that he's doing, it, it's not that important to, to sling a ladder like that over an alleyway. But um, but he's doing it and and these are the kinds of things you have to, to try to imagine could happen on your jobs that you want to avoid. Now, again, most contractors mean well and it seemed like a good idea at the time, but things don't always turn out that way. So I'm going to give you another example of when things didn't turn out how they expected. This is uh, this is a scene over in uh, England. That, that little white van there on the left, um, somehow it ended up in that channel. And they decided, well, they better get a crane to pull it out. So they got a crane, they hired a crane to, to strap to the van and and get it up out of there. Well, the crane couldn't support the way to the van, the crane ended up in the channel as well. So what do you do to fix that? Well, you get a bigger crane. Which is what they did. They got a bigger crane, pull up the van. Now they're trying to pull the other truck out as well. This is something that actually happened. And sadly, that crane ended up in the channel along with the van and the first crane. Um, can you imagine what the, what it would cost to settle a claim like this? I mean, you might have, should have just left the van in the channel in the first place, but, but anyway, um, again, these are things that you wanted. And here's, this is probably the key, key most slide of the presentation to protect you guys. Um, these are the things that you're going to want on your projects. You could have bid bonds, performance, you don't have to get them all. Uh, bid bonds, performance and payment bonds, that's number one. The bid bond ensures that the contractor's gonna, gonna bid the, the contract for, well, he's gonna, he's gonna stick by his bid. He's, he's gonna pay what he said that he, uh, he said he would uh, pay or, or request. The performance bond, the performance bond protect, it's in place for the entire project and it, it ensures performance on that, on behalf of the contractor. Now, what's nice about the performance bond is it's issued from a surety. And if the contractor doesn't perform for whatever reason, you get the surety to act on your behalf. So they're the ones that are going to push. So they're the ones that are going to push the contractor and say, hey, look, you got to finish this job or we're going to be charging you. So, you know, we're going to be charging you the cost of the bond. So, so they'll help you to push the contractor along if things, things aren't going well. And the payment bond, now the payment bond is actually a requirement in the Public Contracts Code. And what that does is that pays the suppliers and the subcontractors so that they don't come after you later on and say, well, this guy didn't pay me. So, so those are bonds that you, you want to consider having. You want to make sure that you have a licensed contractor, licensed to do work in the state of California. Indemnification, hold harmless. It's typically a clause that you put into your contract. And then, of course, you want insurance like those previous examples that I showed you. So you got general liability, property damage, automotive, workers comp, and errors and omissions if it's professional services like architectural services or design services. Now, you also can use payment retention. So you, you hold back payment until the job's complete. These are things that help you get the job done.
John, can, this is Jason. Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
On, on the first bullet point, you, you were using the term bond, but is it really, are we really talking about a type of insurance? Under the bid, performance and payment bonds?
Well, they're through surety companies. There's alternatives you could do, like for the bid bond, you could ask for an amount. Normally a bid bond's like 10% of the contract price, but you can ask for maybe $25,000, which people, you know, contractors usually don't do that. They, they, they have cash flow concerns, things like that. So they'll usually work with a surety. And so the surety is like an insurance company. Oh, one other thing about performance bonds. You can get a 25%, a 50% or 100% performance bond. But the, there's no reason to. And the reason why, I mean, you should always get 100% performance bond because it's going to cost the contractor as much as a 50% or a 25%. So you, you should ask for 100% performance bond. Did I answer your question, Jason? Okay. Go to the next slide. Okay, uh, this is getting back to errors and omissions insurance. And by the way, if you have something really unusual, like you want to do an aerial flyover and, and take pictures from the sky of the construction site or whatever it is you're doing, you could also ask for specific insurance like aviation insurance. Okay, now, I put this up here because this is something that you'd want to ask for from your architects and engineers and designers. You want unre- unrestricted ownership of whatever work product you're paying for. I mean, after all, you're paying for it. So you should have the unrestricted use of, of whatever it is that they're, they're providing to you. So that would include blueprints, schematics, designs. You, you have this in your contract and you tell them, look, you, you can, this is for us to use and you can use it with our permission, but otherwise we have unrestricted use of using this however we want. Again, this is just for designers, engineers, that kind of thing. Okay, other factors to consider. If you're using federal funds, I, I don't know if you are or not. I don't think so. But if you use federal funds or grants, the, the feds have very strict requirements that they want followed. It's called uniform guidance. And with uniform guidance, they have, it, it drives me nuts. It's like all kinds of stuff. There's the Davis Bacon Act, Anti-Lobbying Acts, EEO, anti-kickback language that you have to put in your contracts, just all kinds of stuff to. At one point I was checking lists to, uh, we were using some FEMA funds when I worked for the Fire Authority. And I was checking list to make sure that the contractors weren't excluded as terrorists and it, it was just, it was just nuts. But anyway, keep that in mind if you have to use federal funds, they have some very specific requirements. Advertisement and pre-qualification of contractors. If you have an ongoing need, you can, you can establish a pre-qualified list. Now, in order to do that, you need to come up with pre-qualification questionnaire upfront that the contractors will fill out and you, you agree to. And then you can put them on your list and, and, and draw from them as projects come up. That's, that's one way of doing it also. Prevailing wages are typically required in California. Prevailing wages are, are normally based on bargaining agreements and they're, they're geographical. So they are based on where it is you're located. But, but a lot of times you have to require the prevailing wages. The contractor should know this. They have to register with the Department of Industrial Relations and they have to have certified payroll in order to comply with the prevailing wage requirements. Project commitment. When you go out to bid and you have a, a project that you're looking to have, have done, one of the things that you can ask the contractor is, well, how busy are you now? You know, do you have the resources and the personnel to commit to us to get our project done? So you, you may want to look at that when you're, uh, when you're evaluating your bids. And then any subcontractors that the contractor might use, you want approval of that. You want to make sure that you get somebody in there that, that you're comfortable with. And as the prime, your main contractor has to perform at least 51% of the work. Okay, change orders. Go to the next slide. I love this slide. This is, uh, you see the little dinghy there on the back of the boat that says original contract and then change order on the, on the larger boat. Change orders aren't necessarily a bad thing. They're just, you know, you just got to deal with them. If you go to the next slide, it's again, communication is the key. The, the, the better your scope of, of work in the upfront, the, 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 the fewer change orders in theory you'd have to do later on. So communication's key. You want to keep that, that line of communication open with the contractor, with your, with your construction manager. Changes to the scope of the work happens as work proceeds. They see things that they want to, you know, question on you, you know, maybe we, we could put carpet in instead of tile, whatever it might be. And, and you know, you might agree to it. It might, there might be some, some logic, some sense to doing that and you could save money doing it as well. So it could increase or decrease the scope. It could increase or decrease the, uh, cost as well. Now, your project managers should be the only one authorized to approve change orders. You want to keep that central point of approval because otherwise you're going to have people, you know, oh, that sounds like a good idea. Yeah, let's, let's do that or, you know. Green color sounds great to me. Let's put that in instead. And you know, you guys might not want that. So keep that project manager as your central point of authorization, whoever that might be. And then learn from the changes and refine your specs down the, down the road if, if need be, if, uh, if it warrants it.
So John, I have another question off of that slide.
Yeah.
So let, let's, let's assume we end up hiring a project manager and some, some kind of significant change order comes. I'm trying to understand how that works in relation to approval by the whole board. Right? Because anything over $10,000 has to come to the whole board. But this also, you know, obviously at that point, we will have already issued and awarded a contract, the bonds will have been issued, all that kind of stuff. I'm just, can you just give us a sense of all that interacts as far as coming back to the board, Brown Act, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, that's a real good question because otherwise you could be inundated with change order requests and they could delay the project if you got to get board approval and whatnot. One way around it is to issue contingency when you issue the original contract. So let's say your contract's $100,000. It's probably going to be more than that, but you can add a 10 or a 15% contingency to cover unanticipated changes down the road. So that way you're approving, you know, 110, $115,000 contract agreement. That doesn't mean you're going to pay them the whole amount. If you don't use it, the money stays with you. But at least it gives the flexibility to your project manager to, to agree to changes down the road without having to go back to the board. That'd be one way to handle it. Uh, payment arrangements. This is kind of a lot. When you, when you bid out a, a construction contract, normally it's one price, one project price, and then you break it down into progress payments. You know, we'll pay you monthly, we'll pay you quarterly, we'll pay as phases get completed. That kind of thing. It's whatever you guys agree to, you and the contractor is how you're going to work it. But you want to, you want to formalize it and identify it upfront. You don't want any questions later on or in the middle of the project where the guy, well, how come I didn't get paid? Or, you know, why are you only paying me this much? You want to make sure that it's all laid out as you enter into the contract itself. And payment retention is important. You could withhold 10% of the project cost for, um, until 30 days after project completion, just to make sure that everything gets done. There's something called a punch list that you go through at the end of the project where your project manager or one of you guys walks through the project itself and says, well, you know, you got to finish this first before we're going to release the funds to, to pay you off. Uh, time and materials probably wouldn't come into it uh, for a construction project, reimbursable expenses. Probably not likely. Prompt payment discounts you may take advantage of. If you pay within so many days, like 20 days, maybe you'll get a 2% discount, something like that. They might agree to that, but normally it's something like net 30 days. And then liquidated damages, that's really, really belonged under risk mitigation, but it was getting kind of crowded, the slides. So I, I put it back here under payment arrangements. Liquidated damages are, uh, what, what they are is you can't identify precisely what, what the damage would be if the project's delivered late. So you agree upfront what that delay is worth. So, so in other words, if a contractor says, oh, I can get that done in 30 days, you could tell them, okay, that's fine, but if you go over 30 days, I'm going to deduct $100 a day. That's what liquidated damages are. And, and so, uh, it, it's a way to keep things on track. Uh, what happened with the state of California and the Northridge earthquake was kind of interesting. That shut down a major freeway in Southern County, up by you guys, I guess. And, uh, and, and the state was, there were a lot of pressure to get the freeway open again. You know, the overpasses collapsed. It was, it was like big, 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 big problems. So they issued these, uh, these contracts very, very quickly. It was based on an emergency, emergency basis. But they put liquidated damages and huge liquidated damages. If these guys didn't meet the timeframe that they proposed at the time they issued the contract. But what the state also did that I thought was, was pretty cool was, was they said, okay, if you complete it early, then we're going to give you an incentive. And they did. They worked 24 hours a day to get that, that freeway up and running again because it was that important to the state. So anyway, that's, that's liquidated damages.
Hey, John, before you move to the next slide, do you, uh, recommend guaranteed max contracts for construction projects? Uh, or do you look at more time and material?
Normally it's guaranteed max, but you got to be flexible because, you know, down the road, you're just not sure what's going to happen and you know, if changes are going to be made along the way.
Well, yeah, I just think that, I mean, I've seen it both ways because you can, you, you end up sometimes with a guaranteed mass contract bid scenario where, and everyone's building in, uh, padding their construction cost for the unknown. And so you may not necessarily get the best price because then as, as long as they come in within that, that, uh, price point, there's, uh, the incentive is for them to bring in the reduced cost that we wouldn't share. But conversely, if it's time material, then of course then, you know, we get the better end of it, but then it requires more oversight.
Yeah, good point, good point. I guess it's kind of project specific what, um, you know, what it, what it is that you're looking for.
Right, okay.
Okay, I got a couple of recommendations for you folks. Now, keep in mind, I, you know, I, I looked over your website. I looked over your policies and procedures. So I'm not really that familiar with your operation, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a couple of recommendations here that I think could help you out. The first is to sign up for the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. You, you're not currently, uh, signed up for that. There's no cost to, to sign up for it. And it's, it'll free up a lot of, uh, it'll give you a lot of flexibility. Public projects of $60,000 or less can be performed by horse account using your, your own resources or by negotiated contractor purchase order. So really that's, that's the informal bid limit is what you're, you're looking at there. Public projects in the amount of 20,000 or less, well, you, that's the informal bid procedure there. Now, what that means is that you don't have to go to the board to get approval for projects of $200,000 or less. Over $200,000, you have to do formal bid proceedings. You do the advertising, you get your contractors, qualified contractors list and you don't have to get board approval for that. Um, it's just a, a lot more flexibility, a lot, a lot of agencies. If you go, if you go to the next slide. Uh, what it takes is you need a resolution by the board. So you guys will have to approve a resolution. And there's samples on this website that I put on the bottom here and you file it with the state controller's office. Now, if the act is silent on a particular matter, then the public contract code would apply. And like I said, the sample resolution and frequently asked questions are on the state controller's website. This is something that I've used the past couple of places where I've worked and it, it works quite well. Again, it just gives you a lot of flexibility in terms of, of managing the, the smaller, the under $200,000 projects. So it's something that I'm recommending that you do. And, and like I said, there's no cost to it. You only got to do it once. You don't have to renew every year. A lot, a lot of agencies are on there. You'll be, you'd be with a lot of good company. The second thing, and, and I'm a big proponent of this, is job order contract. I don't believe you're doing it now, but job order contracting is wonderful for renovation, repair, minor construction projects and maintenance. It's a competitively bid fixed price multi-year contract based on established unit prices. Yeah, unit price book or a construction contract catalog. And, um, there's a multiplier that's a, this thing's amazing. The, the unit price book, it could be 80, 100,000 line items with, um, that's associated with prevailing wages for your particular area. And it'd be things like installing a deadbolt or installing a ramp or a roof or flooring. It, it, it covers a lot, a lot of areas. And what the contractors do is they bid on a multiplier to either add to that or detract from it in terms of what their bid's going to be for, um, any projects that they do for your agents. And it's, um, it's been bid out and available through some cooperative bid consortiums such as Sourcewell and BidNet. So there's, there's some places you could find it. We're, we're looking to put one in place through Sourceware, well, up in, uh, a fire district in Northern California. And they're, they're very excited about it, but it, it, I, I put, I put one in place myself. I actually bid it out and put it in place at the Orange County Fire Authority. And it just, all your guys, all your facilities guy has to do is pick up the phone and call one of these contractors that had bid on this and, and they'll help you uh, come up with the proposal and what the costs will be. And the costs are all laid out in that, that, uh, unit price book. So you know what it is you're going to spend. Um, you don't have to bid it out. It's, it's already been bid out. You can get guys in there real quick to get work done. So, uh, it, it's a system that I, I highly recommend. Oh, and then there's, there's also us, Regional Government Services. We're a joint powers authority, so we're all public employees. If you do enter into an agreement with us for our services, it'd be an intergovernmental agency agreement. My boss is Glenn Lazoff. He's the Director of Financial Services. There, there's about, I don't know, about 100 of us that are working for RGS right now. And, uh, i- it's just a, a really good, uh, resource. We've, we've helped a lot of the smaller agencies out throughout California. And basically that's it. It's, uh, that's what I had for you today. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I'd love to open up the floor. We've got another 15 minutes or so. So we've got plenty of time to talk through some questions. I mean, I've, I'm gonna just dive right in. Can you talk a little bit more about job order contracting? So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So a contractor would bid on a multiplier, not on a specific, so they would say, we do everything in here at 2X or .75X. so they would say, we do everything in here at 2X or .75X the price. And that's true whether it's a deadbolt or a roof or, you know, building you a new building or whatever, is that correct? So the multiplier applies to the entire thing?
Yeah, um, what you gotta, what you gotta kinda grasp in your head is this, uh, unit price book. It's also called a construction task catalog. They could have anywhere from 15,000 to 120,000 line items in there. I mean, it's a lot, it's a big endeavor. Um, I think we had 180,000 line items when I put it in place in Orange County. And so, yeah, they're tasked, just like you were saying about, you know, installing a deadbolt, replacing a window, um, it's a lot, a lot of different things. And it's based on the, the price, the prevailing price of the materials and the labor for your particular geographical area. And, and so the contractors will look at that and it'll say, whatever, $100 to, you know, install a door. And they'll say, well, we'll do it for, you know, 2% over or 1% over. Or they might say, we'll do it for 1% under, you know, because it includes profit and overhead is, is what those prices that are listed in that, that unit price book are. And so then, if you need something done and you call these guys up and you say, you know, I need a door hung, they'll come out and they'll, they'll write up a proposal, they'll ask you what kinda door, where you want it, all this stuff. And then they'll say, okay, what's gonna cost you this amount of money? And it's, you could go, you could refer to that unit price book and see that cost there. So it's, it's really, it's been competitively bid, they, they bid against other, uh, contractors in the area and competitively awarded. So it's, uh, it's a really, it's a really slick system. It's been around for a while. I think a guy in, uh, I don't know if he was in the Air Force, but I think it was some military guy that came up with the concept about 20 years ago. And it's really taken off, a lot of places are using it now.
John, I guess, I guess my question is, does the contractor bid per request? Or is there a static multiplier that applies to any work that they do?
There's a static multiplier that would apply to everything, but that request is negotiable. I mean, I mean, you could bring, he'll bring that request to you and say, this is what it's gonna cost.
Right.
To this, and you might say, well, you know, that's a little bit more than we expected. And he could say, well, then I could give you this door instead for whatever, 20 bucks.
Right.
Um, but it's not gonna be, you know, as solid or thick or whatever it might be.
Okay.
Or, or conversely, you could say, well, I want something a little bit more durable than that, you know? Can you give me a steel door or whatever? I don't, I don't.
Right, right, right. Okay, got it, thank you.
It's a great, again, it's a great proven system. I think it's, I tried to look it up before we came online today, but I kinda ran out of time. And I, I think it's considered a best practice in public purchasing right now. If it's not, it should be.
So we have to create our list, or is, or is there already an established? Like, we just basically are saying, we're gonna use this established thing?
No, you don't have to create it yourself, Jason, or you don't have to pay anybody to create it, because it's already been done for this area. And, uh, that's the beauty behind it. And, and it's, uh, it's already been bid out. There's contracts available now. I, there's one, there's one called Sourcewell that, um, I've been using quite a bit of lately. They're actually based out of Minnesota, but they're a public agency. And, and they, uh, they, they, they're a cooperative consortium, and they've done this type of contracting. It's also called, uh, what's it called, indefinite, um, I put it on the slide there. Indefinite quantity, uh, you know, contracts. Again, it's available to you now, and, and all you gotta do is, I'm, I'm sure you'll need board approval for it, but it, it's a, it's a contract that's, that's there that you could, you could take advantage of now.
And this essentially just makes things quicker, because anything on that list, we don't have to put out an RFP every time. We just, because it's already in pre-negotiated, it's all.
It's been bid out, it actually has been bid out. So, um, you know, that, that's a real good way to go. You could do it quickly. It's, it's a system that's in place now, your facilities guy could, could take it and run with it, you know, as soon as you get approval. And, uh, and you start having things done, start having repairs done, maintenance done, things like that.
John, does it, uh, for, uh, obviously, each project can take a, a different amount of time. Does it have kind of guidelines as far as, hey, this type of job should require three hours? This would require eight hours? I mean, because that's, that's one thing for the pricing material, which of course, that's always a, a concern, because you don't want them to be padding the cost of their material that they're bringing to the table for the project, but also, you know, kinda give the guidelines as far as, you know, what we anticipate. How much, how much time did we allow for, you know, a plumbing job or electrical job?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. It, it'll, it'll itemize exactly what the, um, the time it would take would be. So, you know, an hour and 15 minutes or whatever, that, that's what they're gonna estimate it as taking. And that would be in there as well. Now, keep in mind, this is, this is, um, it's strictly for smaller projects. This isn't, if you're gonna build a, a branch library, you're not gonna use job order contracting. This is for maintenance and small, uh, construction projects, uh, for repairs. You know, you need, if, if you needed a roof repaired or you needed a, a building re-roofed, you could use job order contract. It's, it's a, it's a really slick system, it's a really, I highly recommend it. And it's a system that works.
John, in your experience, what impact, if any, does job order contracting have on the competitiveness of like local awards? So one thing that we, you know, talk about frequently is the importance of, especially right now, trying to make sure we're, you know, keeping work local in as much as we can if there are, you know, sort of eligible, if there are eligible parties that were, you know, were considering that. Do you, do you see any correlation or any impact, um, using job order contracting on, uh, on hiring local?
Um, I'll make two points on that. First of all, when it was, when it was bid out, all the local contractors would give an opportunity to bid on it. But they did have a chance, they did have an opportunity. This thing's advertised, uh, quite heavily before they do make an award. And second, it's not exclusive. So, you know, you could pick and choose what jobs you want to contract under job order contracting. Or if you wanna break something out for a local guy, um, you know, to come in and do, maybe you have somebody that's been doing janitorial service forever at one of the branches, and you wanna keep the guy, you could do that. Uh, it's, again, it's not an exclusive, uh, arrangement at all. It's, it's, it's how much or how little you wanna use it.
So it's not, it's not an all or nothing system, where it's like, if we're doing this, then everything has to fall under that, okay?
Yeah, and, and also, there's, there's, depending on what it is, there could be multiple contractors. So for instance, if you wanted to get a room painted, and you call up one of the contractors, have them come in to do the, the work, and for some reason you don't like them, you could always use somebody else. So it, no, it's not exclusive, um, it gives you a lot, a lot of flexibility.
Thanks.
John, I have a quick, quick question too, what have you to do with timelines? You know, some, some of the money, it sounds like will be subject to a deadline, and we need to spend it within a certain amount of time. And how, in your experience, how effective have you found the, uh, what do you call it? Liquidated damages, uh, provision to keep contractors on time? Because it's so easy for stuff to go over, especially if there are change orders involved.
You know, I kinda got mixed feelings about liquidated damages. It is something you can, you can use to keep a project on track. But I, I, I'll tell you with, I just, I just ordered a couple of fire trucks off of, um, a co-op agreement for, um, a city up north. And it, this was like a $1.2 million purchase. And, uh, I asked the finance director, I said, you want me to do liquidated damages? And he said, yeah, yeah, let's do liquidated, and that sounds good. These things have like a long lead time, about a year. And, uh, I told him, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do it. And he said, why not? I said, because COVID's going on, you know, and COVID isn't out. The, the, the contractor can tell you, you know, it's an act of God, I, I can't, you know? Things are shut down, I got guys sick, whatever, and so I shouldn't have to pay the liquidated damage. So I didn't bother asking for them, this, in this particular case. Sometimes you just have to, well, I guess all the time, you have to kinda appeal to the contractor and tell him, look, you know, you gotta help me out here. I got this timeline that I'm working under. If you, if you wanna continue to do business with us, you know, you gotta get this done by whatever, at the end of the month or into the quarter, or whatever it is that you're, you're, uh, working against. But, um, but liquidated damages are effective. I've, I've applied them before, the, the contractors don't like it. They get, they get kinda angry about it, but you, you know, you just gotta tell them, well, this is what you said you were gonna, gonna do, and you didn't. So, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assess the damages. To me, to me, it's just, you know, it's kind of a negative. And I, I've always thought that if, if you're gonna assess liquidated damages, you should give them an incentive to perform early as well, which you don't have to do. But it, it just, to me, it just seems like you should be able to do that. I once asked a, um, somebody from the State Attorney General's Office. I said, if, if I put something in my contract, do I have to also offer that to the contractor? And, and what I was referring to at the time was a, a termination clause. It was, it's a termination for convenience clause, which means you can get out of a contractor with 30 days' notice without any kind of a penalty. And I said, if I put that in my contract, do I have to give him that as well? And what this, what this guy, what this lawyer told me was, he said, it's a state lawyer. He said, John, you're dealing with public funds. You do, you take whatever advantage you can get in spending and protecting those public funds. And no, you don't have to give that guy the same, the same, uh, incentives that you're asking for from him. And so, you know, it's kinda guided my career since then. I take whatever I can get when I'm, when I'm writing a contract.
And then I had a quick follow-up, thanks for that, a quick follow-up. And that is the, when it could be job order contract method that you talked about, it really works for small jobs that you can see. And so when it's repairing a roof or painting a room or whatever, but the minute we started getting into things like replacing the elevator or starting to knock down walls to, you know, reconfigure a space and so on, then we're back to negotiating with contractors that specialize in that on a contractor-by-contractor basis with a, with an award, you know, that takes into account everything that's being done. Is that a correct way to do that?
For, for something as specific as that, I'd say yes, yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I haven't checked, but I, I don't know if you can get elevator repair on a job order contract? It is very specialized.
Yeah, that answers my question, thanks a lot.
Any other questions for John while we've got him here with us? And again, this is, you know, our first swing at this. We'll probably be having a lot more of these conversations as we go, so it's not your, not your last chance, but.
Yeah, I tried to give you, you know, a big overview, and, uh, that's what I was trying to achieve. But if you really wanna focus or narrow in on something, we could always do that later.
All right. Well, I think we'll wrap up this session here. So, John, thank you so much, that was tremendously helpful. Really, I think you've even got a lot to think about, so really appreciate that. And I'm sure that we'll be back with you, uh, at some point in the future with some more questions as we.
No, thanks.
Yeah. Thanks very much.
Right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, guys, we are going to take a 15-minute break. Um, and we'll come back for our last session at noon. So until then, I will see you, camera off, here we go. What's the best course of action is? Cause I think it's one thing to say like, okay, the Brown Act says this, but then it gets like really complicated. So let's do a couple of these together. So here's scenario number one. I have, um, a question that I want to ask Terry before our next board meeting. Can I call him on the phone and ask him that question? It's, it's something about, uh, an item on the agenda, right? Like who cares what it is, but it's something that's coming up on the agenda. And I want to ask him a question. Can I call him up on the phone and ask him?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it's not, as long as you're not communicating with the majority of, of the, uh, the board members. There was, there's five of us, so you, you can, can only communicate with one other person. If you communicate with two, then it's a violation.
That's right. So I can definitely give Terry a call and say, hey, I want to chat with you about X, Y, or Z. What I can't do is say, cause I was having a conversation with Jason last week, and he said something really interesting to me. Because what that becomes is a serial meeting, right? Like it's obvious that I can't like call two of you guys up, put you on speakerphone, you know, or merge the call and have a conversation. But you also can't daisy chain communication together. Okay. Next question. Let's say I've got, um, let's say I, uh, know that the CFD committee is meeting, they're a standing committee. They're meeting and I have a thought about something on their agenda. Can I say something in that meeting? If I'm not on that committee?
I would say yes. It's the standing committee.
My understanding is no. Uh, I guess unless you're making it as a public, you know, as a citizen or something. But you have to sit there, Katie, and not say anything.
Um, yeah, you're, you're right, Terry. That's exactly what I have to, I have to sit there and not say anything, which is exactly what I did yesterday. I watched the meeting on YouTube and had to restrain myself because I was like, I know an answer to one of these questions, but I can't say anything.
You felt your presence.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm delighted to hear that. Hopefully it was positive. Like what is that? Somebody's yacking about the Brown Act. Um, no, so basically anytime you've got two trustees in a committee environment and a conversation, whatever, if a third trustee rolls in, all of a sudden we have a quorum. And that constitutes an unscheduled meeting of the legislative body, right? So if I type in a comment on the YouTube feed, or if I call up, you know, and say, actually, I want to say something about this, all of a sudden we have a quorum and that's an issue. So could I, Jason is also kind of technically right in the sense that I could make a public comment as a member of the public, like the Brown Act doesn't limit my First Amendment rights, but I cannot make a comment in my capacity as trustee, right? So I could say, you know, as a resident of an apartment complex on Northlake Avenue, I want you guys to know about XYZ information, but I can't say anything that sort of comes into contact with my, with my role as a trustee. So that's like a weird fun thing. So what should I do? Like if I have a thing that I really, really think the CFD committee needs to know, what do I do about it?
Regular board agenda, I guess, right?
Yep. Yep. I wait for that to come up at their board report and then we have a discussion about it. So that's, that's exactly right. And it feels kind of frustrating because that means, you know, I, I, I don't have anything to, you guys had a lovely meeting. But the point is like, if I had something substantive that I wanted to talk about, I would need to wait until there was a public occasion to have that conversation. Um, and then, you know, and then we can, we can all chat about it. And that's sort of how that unrolls. Okay.
I guess I was just confused.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Cause I was just confused on that one, just because as a standing committee, the meeting would have been publicly posted. It's the, right? So that's where the, I guess that's like one of those obscure parts of the Brown Act really makes absolutely no sense.
Well, it's called the church mouse rule, right? And the reason is, and the, the sort of rationale is that like, if you as a trustee want to go to any meeting that involves like two other trustees and your presence would create a quorum, you can absolutely do that, but you have to zip it. You cannot say anything like quiet as church mouse, right? And that's because basically members of the public would not necessarily know that you would be there and they wouldn't know that there was an opportunity to witness or engage in or keep track of substantive board discussion.
Got it.
So that's, that's, that's sort of the idea. And, you know, generally when there's a question about the Brown Act, the best thing to do is just ask. It is total, you can ask Nikki, you can ask Natalia, you can ask me if it doesn't like make things more difficult in the communication department, because you've already talked to somebody else. But just ask somebody and that is always, always, always fine. What if you have something that you need to say to all the trustees? Let's say you're going to be, um, maybe, okay, here's one. Let's say you found, uh, some article in the LA Times and you think everybody should read it. And it's super helpful and super interesting. Can you email that out to the full board? Without violating the Brown Act? Yes, yes, you can, but how do you do it? You BCC everybody. So you BCC the entire board. Don't put everybody in the two. all of a sudden we have a quorum and that's an issue. So could I, Jason is also kind of technically right in the sense that I could make a public comment as a member of the public, like the Brown Act doesn't limit my First Amendment rights, but I cannot make a comment in my capacity as trustee. Right? So I could say, you know, as a resident of an apartment complex on Northlake Avenue, I want you guys to know about XYZ information, but I can't say anything that sort of comes into contact with my with my role as a trustee. So that's like a weird fun thing. So what should I do? Like if I have a thing that I really, really think the CFD committee needs to know, what do I do about it?
Regular board agenda, I guess, right?
Yep, yep. I wait for that to come up at their board report and then we have a discussion about it. So that's, that's exactly right. And it feels kind of frustrating because that means, you know, I I I don't have anything. You guys had a lovely meeting. But the point is like, if I had something substantive that I wanted to talk about, I would need to wait until there was a public occasion to have that conversation. Um, and then, you know, and then we can, we can all chat about it. Um, and that's sort of how that unrolls. Okay.
I guess I was just confused.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Cause I was just confused on that one, just because as a standing committee, the meeting would have been publicly posted. It's right? So that's where the, I guess that's like one of those obscure parts of the Brown Act really makes absolutely no sense.
Well, it's called the church mouse rule, right? And the reason is in the the sort of rationale is that like, if you as a trustee want to go to any meeting that involves like two other trustees and your presence would create a quorum, you can absolutely do that, but you have to zip it. You cannot say anything like quiet as church mouse, right? And that's because basically members of the public would not necessarily know that you would be there and they wouldn't know that there was an opportunity to witness or engage in or keep track of substantive board discussion.
Got it.
So that's, that's, that's sort of the idea. And you know, generally when there's a question about the Brown Act, the best thing to do is just ask. It is total, you can ask Nikki, you can ask Natalia, you can ask me if it doesn't like make things more difficult in the communication department, because you've already talked to somebody else. Um, but just ask somebody and that is always, always, always fine. What if you have something that you need to say to all the trustees? Let's say you're going to be um, maybe, okay, here's one. Let's say you found uh, some article in the LA Times and you think everybody should read it and it's super helpful and super interesting. Can you email that out to the full board? Without violating the Brown Act? Yes, yes, you can. But how do you do it? You BCC everybody. So you BCC the entire board. Don't put everybody in the two subject line, like you can send it to Nikki and then BCC the whole board. Because that way I can't reply to you, right? So if I read that article and I go, oh my God, that's so interesting. You're absolutely right. We should think. I can't because I've been BCC'd, right? So that's one of those sort of best practices that we have in place and you'll notice you get BCC'd on stuff a lot. That's exactly why. So one way communication, if you want to be extra careful, the best thing to do, send it to Nikki and say, hey, I thought this was really interesting. Maybe we can include it as correspondence in the next board package or you can BCC the trustees. Fine. The problem is not information. The problem is discussion and deliberation. Does that make sense? So it's not about like getting people info, although some of it has to be noticed publicly. The issue is about, is there a discussion that's happening that um, that that needs to be accessible to members of the public? Does that make sense? Okay. So I mean, I think relevant to that also is a question about um, having your cameras on during meetings, right? So one of the things that members of the public are, you know, entitled to have access to basically is seeing how people engage. And in a normal environment, they would be able to sit in the room and see how people are engaging, right? And that's body language and that's, you know, tone of voice and what you actually say. That's something that isn't really reflected in the minutes. Um, and so it's something that's sort of the the visual record. And so insofar, you know, as is humanly possible, we want to make as complete a public record as we possibly can. So obviously, like, you know, sometimes we recess and you turn your camera off, fine. Um, sometimes, you know, mine switches off all on its own, but you want to generally think and ask yourself like, what is the most complete version? What is the most accessible, most transparent version of this interaction that somebody could have, you know, a good understanding of what's going on? And then we want to do everything we can to make that happen. So again, the Brown Act is the floor, not the ceiling, right? It says what we have to do by law, but there are a lot of things that we do that go above and beyond the constraints of the Brown Act. Because, you know, as a district, we've said, actually, you know, public engagement and transparency and accessibility, like these are things that are really important to us. So some things are practices that we do as a district and some things are required by the Brown Act. And so my sort of parting thought on this would just be, if in doubt, ask somebody. If you make a mistake, it's not the end of the world. We fix it. We say we're sorry. We do better. Um, and it is always, always, always uh, okay to just reach out to Nikki or to Natalia and ask for some guidance if you've got a question. Does everybody feel pretty good about that? Okay. Brown Act. All right. So I want to remember now that we've swapped uh, our last two agenda items. So I want to talk about this annual evaluation um, and think a little bit about it. So one thing that all of you should have by now is this very cool district handbook and major ups to Natalia for putting it together. Uh, it was a Herculean labor. If you recall on the website before, there were like 5,000 different documents, some of which were relevant, some of which were really out of date, some of which were, who even knows where they were from. So Natalia went through and we did a big audit and we put everything together and made sure you guys got a hard copy. So this is now the board handbook. It is also on the website. So if you go to the trustee page um, or the board page on the, on the website, you can download um, an electronic copy anytime. So it has a ton of stuff. It has, you know, basically all of our board policies and procedures. It has Rosenberg's Rules of Order. It has Open and Public, which is a sort of guide to the, to the Brown Act. It has a ton of stuff from the ALA, uh, has information about support groups. So really, this is intended to be a comprehensive guide to anything you might have an initial question about. It is not, you know, the end of everything you would need to know, but hopefully it's a really useful reference. And uh, you know, one of the things that we wanted to include, which you'll find in section seven, is some evaluations. So we do as a board, an evaluation of the director on an annual basis. Uh, the director and and the staff, of course, undergo evaluations on a regular basis as well. But to this point, there has not really been any formal board evaluation process. So there's not been a process or a procedure by which we all as a board sit down together and go, okay, well, how did we do? I mean, we have elections where voters are like, we think you did a good job, or we did not think that. But absent that, which is not really like the same as an evaluation at all, um, there's not anything. So one thing that I think is hugely critical is that we start to think about what we feel like a meaningful evaluative procedure would look like. So what you have included in section seven are two things. One is a trustee self-assessment, which is just like basically a checklist for your reference to take a look at and say, do I know these things? Do I not know these things? And identify maybe some areas where you might want to set up some time with Nikki or with me or with somebody else to go over information if you feel like you don't necessarily, you know, have a have a super solid grasp on it. Um, and then the second one, assessing governing board effectiveness. This is an evaluation um, that uh, Darren Aranda, who's uh, heavily involved with the the Cal 20 Special District Association had recommended to me uh, some years back. And I think it's a useful way of thinking about areas that the board participates in. So hopefully you've had a chance to go through and fill this out. Um, what it asks you to do is to assign a numerical value to a series of statements. And then we look through and we see what those kind of numbers shake out as. So basically the way it works is if something is happening all the time and it's it's super consistently the case, very true, you give it a zero. If you think, no, sort of, it's a one and so on and so forth, up to three, if you like, that never happens. That's totally not true. And then each of those areas fall out into uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different categories. So supportive framework, conflict management, teamwork roles, community rapport, staff relationships, sense of purpose, chairperson leadership and productivity. And those categories are what I want to talk to you all about. So did everybody have a chance to actually go through and do the, do the evaluation?
Hey, I think, is the, can I just clarify though?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there a typo under the points for the governing? Cause it's one point for somewhat true, but then two points for somewhat unthroughed.
Right. So basically the higher the points, the bigger a priority something needs to be. So it works in reverse. Does that make sense? So if something never happens, you give it a three. If it mostly doesn't happen, you give it a two. If it kind of happens, you give it a one. If it always happens, you give it a zero. Because what happens at the end is you go through and you tally up all these points. And then whatever categories have the highest number of points, that basically says, oh, this is an area where we need to think a little bit more about how we're doing. Does that make sense? It's a little bit counterintuitive. I know, because it's not like uh, doing great, doing awful. And it's not, and the point is not to say like, this is terrible or this is, you know, good. It's like, where do the areas of focus need to be? Does that make sense? Okay. So, sorry, I um, I didn't, I didn't see what the response was. Did folks have a chance to go through and do it? Okay. Terry, yes.
I did not. I did not. I mean, yeah, I was just, because looking at the board effectiveness as a brand member, I couldn't respond negatively or positively. And certainly in the self-assessment, I know, I admittedly know very little. And I have a weakness across the board, which I need to get up to speed on. So I didn't want to weigh in on something that I have no really knowledge of.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I will say kind of two things. Um, in terms of the self-assessment, I would encourage everybody to take a look and identify maybe two or three areas where they feel like there's a real gap. Um, and then, you know, either reach out to me or reach out to Nikki and let's figure out how to, how to do something about those gaps. Because I think, you know, it's a, it's a long list of things, but uh, you know, maybe if uh, you know, I'm just picking one at random, but maybe if uh, knowing all the key members of staff and understanding what they do is, is a, is a gap, then let's, let's get some time on the books and figure that out. So in terms of the board evaluation, I would encourage you to go through. And I mean, all of you have been in at least one meeting. And just based on that, I would encourage you to go through and, and, and rank some stuff. And if you don't, you know, if you don't have a number for something, fine, but I would be, I would be very interested to know in terms of the categories, those nine categories that we have, what areas of emphasis you all feel like we could really do some growing in? And I I have some opinions on that, but I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to open it up to the floor. So again, those categories, you know, framework, conflict management, teamwork roles, community rapport, staff relationship, sense of purpose, leadership, productivity. I'd really be interested today in identifying, again, maybe two or three of those that we feel like need to be areas of of focus for us for the next year.
Well, can I start, Katie?
Please, yeah, please, Terry.
I found the uh, trustee self-assessment to be a good, a good tool. And I was able to check off, you know, in good progress, just about everything on there. But there's a couple of things that I didn't and I need to uh, circle around and and look at those. On the assessing the board effectiveness, you know, I honestly, I put zeros in almost all the way through, but every now and then I'd throw a one in, a one in there. And I wound up with points that occurred in three of the nine categories, right? But like two and two, et cetera. But it felt to me as even those were sort of, I don't know, like I gave a token point there. So for number A, for example, I had two points on um, that that boiled down to supportive framework. And I don't even know why there's two points to it, because I feel like we have a very supportive framework that we're talking about just on the, us on the board, right?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Yeah, I think that we're a very supportive group and we, we cheer each other on and we applaud each other's individual successes and, and really bask in our group success. And there've been lots of those in the last, you know, few, few months, a couple of years. So it's almost like a false two points under supportive framework. I really don't have any complaints with that. I also got under uh, G, I got two points that wound up there for a clear sense of purpose. And I, you know, my, the purpose, it seems to me that one would have, in being a trustee here, would be wanting to do the things that you mentioned before, to, you know, to do acts of, for the, for the community, be a volunteer, et cetera. So I really feel like my purpose, you know, in my mind about doing this is, is uh, pretty well established, but I still wound up with two points on a clear sense of purpose. I don't think either that there's any misdirection or clear sense of direction that occurs with me and the board anyway. And nor do I think that exists with the rest of us as well. So I guess as I make it a long-winded point to say that um, I kind of feel that we're a pretty good group here. One thing I guess that bothers me that's not even on the list here um, is that I don't think we've ever had a dissenting vote on all of the votes that we've taken uh, as a board, at least in my experience. And I think that means that we think alike and we probably share the same values and so on. But I also wonder if that's something that uh, needs to be called out a little bit. And, you know, I, I can't even almost verbalize it, but it's like, are we just going along with everybody else and, and, you know, voting that way versus really digging deep and figuring out um, what we want to say. Now, I know that we haven't had that many controversial votes to begin with. I could actually see a few more heading our way with the uh, CFD uh, committee and with some of the things that we'd like to do during a time in which we're being scrutinized heavily by the public for spending their money correctly and making sure we're, you know, going through all the guidelines and all the other stuff. So sorry, I'm taking up a lot of time here.
No, no, no.
I, I think that as a, when you look at the nine points that we have here, I'm feeling pretty solid about the way the board functions still in myself. Uh, the thing that uh, bothers me a little bit and it doesn't, not in a bad way. It says, gee, isn't it interesting that we've really never had a no vote on anything we've ever done? And what is that a symptom of, if anything? Should we worry about something like that? So that would be my comment, I guess, on that.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
So I'm still trying, like adding up my points, but like the one area where I see myself, so, okay, let me talk about myself personally. Um, I feel like I'm confident in having a conversation about our mission statement, right? And all of that, but I like, I feel like it would be good to kind of like memorize those top lines. Like I don't feel like I could like say it verbatim. I mean, it seems miniscule, but I do feel like it's important enough that it's something I need to do. And then the other, the other two things, you know, I know we have a governmental liaison. Um, but I just, for me personally, I think paying a little more attention to um, the ALA's emails and just kind of keeping a closer tab on, on what's going on legislatively, uh, the impacts libraries is something I could improve on. Um, as far as us as the board, I'm kind of on the same page with Terry. You know, I've had some of the same concerns too, like more than just from the outside looking in, it's, it is kind of weird that we've had you know, the votes generally come out unanimous, but I think when I kind of check myself on that, you know, it, it's not because, it's, it's because we're going through the process we need to go through to get to the point, right? Like we go through the deliberation. We've delayed votes where we've, you know, made a decision as a board that we need more information or, or more discussion or what have you, right? So I think that's a good thing. And maybe I'm just kind of, my brain's getting lost in the mix of everything we've done the last two years. But I think the one area where it would be good to improve on is we've, we've spent so much time the last two years kind of getting the district and the library itself kind of together with updated policies and the strategic plan and all that. I don't believe we have a separate set of goals and priorities that are board specific. I feel like everything we've done so far has been built around, and I think, I think this is the intent with this conversation is to start figuring that out. But I feel like everything we've done so far has been to get the library on the right track, get the strategic plan in place. Obviously, we play a role in that and have a piece of that. But I think having a kind of separate set of goals and priorities for the board would be an interesting thing to try and figure out and discuss is, you know, where do we have differentiation that we need to be focused on?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think you've hit upon exactly the, the point of this conversation, right? And if this evaluation is a useful tool in helping that move forward, then great. And if it's not, then we can, you know, find other tools that do that. But basically the idea is exactly that, that we have done a lot of work to think about what the district needs to do and how that needs to function. But I think equally, we need to have a conversation about what that means for each of us individually. Like what, what are my goals as a trustee this year? What are our goals as a board? And how do we hold ourselves accountable to that, right? I think that that's actually a really important conversation because in addition to the, you know, the concern around conflict or, or dissension, which I really, I'm a firm believer that disagreement is a very healthy thing for a board. Um, I do think that we have done a pretty good job at finding points of consensus, even when we don't agree. And I know that there have been, I, I, I agree with you, Terry, that we, we haven't had a lot of votes that demonstrate it, but I do think we have had a number of, of conversations where not all of us agree. And I think that's good. I would, I would love to see a little bit more of that, actually. I would want to make sure that people feel really comfortable expressing disagreement or just like, I need more information on this, or I don't- or just like, I need more information on this, or I don't, you know, whatever it is. I I think that's a priority. So those, those are positive, but in the, in the same, in the same sort of vein, I, my personal belief is that we are most effective when we are not just reactive, but when we're proactive. So in that, I mean, yes, we certainly have a duty of care to the district. And, you know, we see things that are brought by staff and by the director, and we make decisions on those, and that's fine. But what are we actively going out and doing, right? And that doesn't necessarily mean like, because it's pandemic, physically going out and doing. But but what are we bringing to the table? And that's, that's the conversation that I want to have today. And that I hope, you know, this evaluation helps us think a little bit about. And again, I don't think we're going to finish that conversation today, but I want to open it up because I think it's an important one.
As a newest member, I do have a question in looking at these questions, which I think are great. But also, maybe in prior discussions and as part as a part of developing the strategic plan, being such a small organization that the district is being a valuable resource for the director and the team so that we're actually truly being effective and not getting in their way, guiding, providing leadership and support while not being a hindrance. I I think there's, there's, I want to make sure that we are discussing that piece of it because it's, we can set up ourselves our own goals, lofty goals. But if from the director's standpoint, assistant directors and the teams, the the staff standpoint, if they're just placating and responding to the board's whims is because that's those, what those crazy fools want, they'll do that because obviously that's, they have to. But gauging how effective this elected body is to truly work side by side with the director and the and the staff to make it efficient and getting their input as to how we could work together as well and be effective. And I maybe, again, I I forgive me if this question seems silly because probably those were driven by the rehashing or the development of the strategic plan. But I was wondering what what kind of thought has gone into that?
No, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think it's, I don't think it's rehashing anything. I mean, I think Jason's absolutely correct in that we have focused a lot of energy on bringing the district to a functional place. But I I think it's fair to say that we have not had a lot of very in-depth or critical, you know, and by that I mean sort of thoughtful and rigorous conversations about what the, what the board's specific and very measurable role in that is. And that's, that's the goal to start today. It may be something that we need to have recurring on agendas, right, as a, as a conversation about governance. I, you know, I'm open in terms of what that looks like. But I, I, I wanted to raise it today as a, as a question to get us at least starting this conversation because I do think it really matters.
And I think it's also fair to point out that all of the pieces of the library and our support groups are having the same conversation, right? Like, the foundation is having this discussion of what is our purpose versus, or as a piece of the overall library strategic plan. The friends are having that same conversation. The staff are having that conversation, right? So I think it's only fair that that we do the same. And I do kind of like the idea of how we figure out to have it as an ongoing conversation. You know, because I actually, under clear sense of purpose, I had six points there. Right? And 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 it comes from my earlier comments of, I think we're, we're doing a good job. But I think we're at the point now where we can start having, like, thinking about ourselves and our specific goals as a body.
And I thi- I think alongside that, you know, one priority that is very much top of mind for me is making sure that all of us feel like we have scope and opportunity to contribute in meaningful ways. I think that because of the sort of corporate body, because of the corporate nature of this body, like, we've got five individual people. And outside of regular meetings, we can't really do that much together, but we can do a lot individually. And and one thing that really matters to me is, is thinking about, what is it specifically? You know, kind of to link back to our earlier conversation about appreciation, what is it specifically that is meaningful to you? That you really want to do, that you really want to see happen, that you feel like you can contribute in a real and substantial way? And and are we creating an opportunity for you to do that? Are we supporting you in doing that? Or does it feel like, well, nobody's really interested in that, or I don't, I don't really know when I can do it or how I can say it? So I guess I'll just wait till someone asks me. Like, that's what I want to get at, is that sort of proactive idea of like, yeah, let's bring stuff to the table and figure out how to, how to make sure that that's functioning. So I think what I'd like to suggest, because again, I think this is going to be the first of many conversations about this, is I'd like, I'd like to suggest this. For our January meeting, I would like to have a governance agenda item where we come back to this conversation. And I would, I would like for each of us individually to identify at least one or two goals as trustees that we have for the year for ourselves personally. And I would like us to talk about those, figure them out, commit to them. And, you know, then we can, we can figure out what the next stage of this conversation looks like. But I think between, you know, kind of seeing a little bit what our year is going to hold, thinking a little bit about the challenges inherent in a virtual format for that year, and then thinking through some of these, these assessment tools as ways of perhaps directing some of that goal setting. I, I think we should all be able to come up with some, some pretty specific and measurable goals. And I think, as, as Ross pointed out, like, let's think about how useful those are to the district specifically, right? How do they advance the mission of the organization? How do they, how do they move that ball forward? As opposed to just like, you know, I'm super interested in X and I think we should have a program on X, like, that's not a goal, right? That's just, that's a programming idea that you can send to Nikki in an email and she can ignore it. Or not, you know, but like, a, a goal is, you know, I'm going to make sure that I have time on my calendar at least every six weeks, and I call every single one of you and have a conversation about how you feel things are going. And we talk about any areas of, you know, specific content or whatever it is that we want to address. So some, you know what I mean? Like, that's, that's a goal. So that's what, that's what I'd like to ask everybody to come back with in January. Does that feel reasonable, meaningful, helpful, useful?
Can you repeat it and rephrase? Sorry. I want to make sure that I understand exactly what you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like every single one of us to come prepared to the January meeting with one or two specific goals that we as individual trustees are committing to for the coming year. And they need to be specific and they need to be measurable, right? So if you, if you want to think about how those might be phrased for you specifically, I mean, there are plenty of examples in the operating plan of departmental goals. Obviously, those are very different from the kind of goals that we would have as trustees. But something that is real, that is tangible, that is measurable, and that you say, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm going to say I'm going to do this, and then I'm going to do it. Yeah? Okay. I would also appreciate it if, you know, as you have the time, you can look through this board evaluation format. And perhaps we can talk about this in January, we can talk about it at a future meeting. But I'd like to have some sort of annual board evaluation process that we all go through together every year. Because I think that in the same way that having a consistent set of circulation metrics is really important to defining, you know, how is the health of our district, having a consistent set of board evaluation metrics is really important as well. So this is, like I said, this is the first pass at that. We can use this format, we can use something else. But I'd like to have some feedback from you all on how helpful or not helpful you feel like it is, what else you think would be meaningful in terms of a board evaluation process. And I'd like to get that nailed down, you know, in the first quarter of this year.
Katie, can I also add something?
I, I, please, of course.
So I have one-on-one meetings set up with all of the trustees basically in the next week or two. So if there's things from the evaluation that you found were gaps, that might be a good place for our conversation to start about what I can be providing or information that you think will help you grow as a trustee. So that's another thing to be thinking about. You could be making a list of topics that maybe the evaluation pointed that I can help fill those information gaps.
That's a really good point, Nikki. Thank you. That's great. And it's a good time too to chat through specific goals you may have with Nikki and ask her, like, hey, I feel like this is something I can really bring to the table. Is that helpful? Is that useful? Like, how would that actually work? So like, let's start having those conversations. And again, remember the, you know, the line between you and the director is an open one. Our conversations, because of Brown Act reasons, can happen one-on-one. But you can always, you can always hit Nikki up and ask her for her opinion and get some feedback on, on specific ideas you have. And I know you all do that already. I'm just, you know, kind of encouraging us to, to think about ways in which we can be proactive, given our somewhat distanced reality for the next at least six months. Okay. So with that, I think that brings us pretty much to the end of our agenda for today. I'd like to thank all of you for being here and being thoughtful and prepared and thinking through some of these questions together. Like I said, this is the first installment of a conversation that will continue to happen. And thank you to all of our presenters who joined us. And of course, to the director and to our support staff. Thank you to Natalia for her hard work in putting together the handbook. And, yeah, any, any final comments that anybody would like to make before we wrap up for the day?
Just a big thank you from me to everybody that helped put this together, this retreat. I appreciate that. And it's, I think there was some valuable stuff that came out of here today. A lot of, of opportunity for self-reflection and self-improvement. So thanks very much for that.
I would echo that. And certainly, as the newest kid in the block, this, this conversation is timely. As, as you discuss, you know, the, the role of the board and role of the individual trustees, this, and the material that's provided, very helpful. And Katie, thank you for your leadership on this. And again, thank the staff for putting this together.
And and I'll just add, I think th- this quote, which I'll never always get exactly right, I think is never going to leave my head as far as I'm on this board. But I, I still, I will, I will always remember when we were debating the bond measure for the ballot, Veronica from the town council saying that something along the lines of, no matter what happens on November third, we get to wake up on the fourth, knowing that we did something to improve our community. And I think, I think today is just another example of seeing that through, that overall message. And Katie kind of touched on it to touch, to start off the meeting. And, you know, this is our opportunity to have control over our own little piece of of democracy. And and doing that by default means we're working to, to improve and strengthen our community here in Altadena. And so that's what's going to keep me motivated. And I, and I want to just really thank the board and the staff, especially the board members, right? This is, this is all volunteer for all of you, you. So carving out half of a Friday to have this kind of introspection as we move forward this year is critical. So thank you, everyone.
Here, here. All right. Well, with that, we are at the end of our agenda. And look at that, it's 12:46, one minute over. Pretty good. I will take it. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm okay with adjourn.
Okay. Any objection? All right, hearing none, we are adjourned at 12:46 PM. Thank you guys so much for being here. And really appreciate your time. Thanks so much.